Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 5th, 2013 meeting of the Adana City Council and the Adana Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Roll call, please, Ms. Mangan.
Member Bennett?
Here.
Member Brindle?
Here.
Member Sprague?
Here.
Member Swenson?
Here.
Next, we have the form of meeting agenda. Is there a motion to approve the form of meeting agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to approve the form of meeting agenda. Discussion.
Your honor, this is just a little out of order, but I wanted to introduce you to Soren Maddick. Soren is our legal counsel for tonight. He's with the Campbell Knutson firm. Normally Roger Knutson fills that role, as you know, but he had another commitment tonight, so Soren is joining us in that role tonight.
Very good. Thank you. Soren, good to see you again. All right, next is the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Yes, your honor, four A, please.
Four A, all right. With the exception of four A, is there a balance, is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda? Got a motion and a second to approve the balance of the consent agenda, other than four A. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those who say nay, carried. And then, Member Sprague, back to four A. There was a issue relative to the minutes I think you wanted to address.
Yes, your honor, on page four of the July 16th minutes, the top, we were talking about the original motion on the zoning changes, and after bullet point six, it should say "front-facing garage," colon, and then just the word "eliminate."
Any other comments from other council members? All right. We have a set of amended minutes with the addition of the word "eliminate" after item six, page four, "front-facing garage," colon, "eliminate."
I'll move that.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second on the amended minutes. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those who say nay, carried. All right, we've got a good audience tonight that'll be able to experience on a firsthand basis our results of our Quality of Life survey that we have been doing every other year. We want to make sure that we don't miss something as a council that's important to folks in our community. And so, we retain Decision Resources, which is a terrifically qualified company in the metropolitan area that works for many municipalities, to do this work for us. And Dr. Bill Morris is here tonight from Decision Resources to tell us the results of that survey. And when we did this two years ago, we found out we broke the quality-of-life record in the metro area, and it looked like, from your data, we broke our own record.
In many ways, you have. The survey I'm going to be talking about tonight was conducted in July. It involved contacting 400 randomly selected households across the community. The non-response rate was less than 5%. In fact, we just tabulated it at 3.75%. Again, the problem that we had was finding people at home, not refusals to take the survey. And in about 5% of the households' cases, we actually made 36 attempts over a 10-day period in order to administer the survey to the targeted household. The demographics have been checked against the updated 2010 census, and we find that on the major variables, we are within plus or minus 5% right down the line. The projectability, if we were to talk to every adult resident of the community, we would expect to be within plus or minus 5% in 95 out of 100 cases on those questions. So let's begin with a very basic question, and that is, how would you rate the quality of life in the community? Would you say it's excellent, good, only fair, or poor? Now, in 2011, Adana was at 90%. That has gone down a bit, to 73% this time. We'll be talking more about the reasons why that did drop. The good, on the other hand, as you can see, went from 9 to 26. So it wasn't a drift away from positive ratings as much as away from extremely positive ratings to more subdued positive ratings. In fact, among critics, only 1% of the community fits that category. When we ask people what they like most about Adana, to look at this chart, the darker green is the 2011 response pattern, while the lighter green is the 2013 response pattern. And you can see there have been some changes. For example, convenient location, which is the quintessential suburban response, moved from 25% down to 9%. That is, people began to particularize more what they liked about the community than simple location. Housing in neighborhood remained a key variable at 15%, close friends and family at 11%, good schools almost doubled from 10% to 18%. And as we continue down the list, you can see changes of about 1%, 2%, or 3% until we get to natural beauty. Natural beauty ended up coming in at 12%, triple the number that we had in 2011. Close to jobs, 3%. And the scattered, those are the folks we talked about last time that had really idiosyncratic things that they liked about the community, and we really couldn't classify them. So the two things that really moved dramatically, and moved dramatically upward, are good schools and natural beauty of the community itself. On the other hand, the more generic response that we tend to see in the suburbs moved from 25% down to 9%.
Do you have a better definition of natural beauty?
Yes, when we looked at that, when people were talking about natural beauty, they talked about the landscape, they talked about trees, they talked about just the general natural ambiance, if that helps.
Okay, including maybe parks?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, what about the most serious issue facing the community? Well, if we're going to ask what people like most, we should ask what's on their mind with respect to problems. And we ought to go right down to the bottom of the chart first. Those are the folks that said nothing. These were the ones that actually argued at times, where our phoneers were suggesting that there's a serious issue facing Adana. And that moved up a little bit to 34%. That's the highest percent of what we call boosters across the metropolitan area. The norm on that currently is about 6%. So you're actually about six times higher than the norm on boosters. Well, what kinds of things were bothering people? Well, as you can see, lack of redevelopment moved downward from 13% to 2. Taxes remained steady, poor roads remained somewhat steady, school district funding, the same, rising crime now is down by four points. Traffic congestion was up somewhat, although not as large an increase as we see in neighboring communities to you, where that's actually gone into double digits and, in some cases, into the 20% range. The one thing that emerged from nowhere, that is, we had no one refer to it two years ago, but mentioned it in this survey, was housing teardowns. And that came in at a significant 10%. When we tracked those people, we found that they tended to more often rate the city as good rather than excellent. So it was a contributing factor, then, to the decline in the overall quality of life. Too much development was a little bit high, that came in at 5. But by and large, except for the housing teardowns coming in so highly, and the concern, moderate concern about traffic congestion, things have remained pretty much the same. The lack of redevelopment, we're going to see as no longer an issue, impacts a number of other questions as we go more specifically on those topics in the survey. Community direction, you're at the high again for the metro area, 92% rate the community direction as in the right direction, 6% thought it was on the wrong track, and 2% were unsure. The 2% were newcomers, basically, to the community and didn't feel they had enough background, one way or another. The 6% is amazingly low. Normally, we expect to see 10% negative on any question we ask. We call that the curmudgeon factor. The 92, again, is right at the high for metro. On city characteristics, we asked residents about a number of types of development, residents, the number of residents, housing, nursing homes, parks and open spaces. It really ran the gamut. And they could tell us there was too many or too much, they could tell us it was about-right number, or they could tell us it was too few or too little. And we used a semaphore as the analogy on this, with red indicating there are too many, yellow indicating it's about right, and green indicating too few. Well, of course, what you pick up immediately from the colors of the chart is that there's a predominance of yellow. That is, people tend to be fairly satisfied with the number of those various developments or characteristics of the community. In fact, if we go down the list, there are really only three that don't have a majority in the about-right category. Now, what turns up on the too-many category? Well, rental units. 34% thought there were already too many, 41% split indicated about right, and 21% thought there were too few. Higher-cost housing, not quite as pronounced a split by any means, but we had 28%, almost 30% indicating there was too many or too much of that. And then, what we find in most communities, and even split between too many or too few on condominiums and townhouses. If we go down and now take a look at the green part of the chart, those that thought, the percentages that thought there were too few or too little. Starter homes, which, of course, we saw two years ago, was 48%. Plurality indicated there were too few. And there, the concern tends to be, can children and grandchildren move back into the community? Sidewalks, as mentioned this time, 41% indicated that there were too few sidewalks. And that tended to come from a new demographic question we asked in terms of walkers in the community. And we do have a couple tipping the 30% level, one senior, one-level senior housing, nursing homes, and assisted senior living. So what we're looking at here, with the exception of sidewalks, is pretty much generational housing. First, how do we keep elderly residents within the community? And secondly, how do we draw young families back into the community, in particular, the children and grandchildren of current residents? What's the perception of city property taxes here? Well, the property tax environment in this community, we would label as being benign. You've got 40% who say that it's very high or somewhat high, 48% just shy of a majority indicating that it's about average in comparison with other communities. And you actually have 5% who say it's somewhat or very low. That's unusual. We normally don't see anybody in that category. And then, 8% were unsure. What are we considered to be a hostile climate? Well, a number of cities to your west have more hostile climates, with 70% split between the very high and somewhat high category, and closer to 20% saying about average. So with respect to city property taxes, then, people are always unhappy about taxes, but they feel they're about average in terms of what other people are paying nearby them. Now, the key question is the value of city services. That is, let's put our taxes in perspective and take a look at how good the city services are that people are paying for. And here, we have 93% who rate the value of city services as either excellent or good. That's an increase of 11% over the already-high rating of 82% excellent or good two years ago. The only fair and poor now has almost disappeared, down to 4%, and the uncertainty also has disappeared, down to 3%. The 93% indicating the value of city services and rating it favorably is the highest that we have across the metropolitan area once more.
Can I have you go back a slide?
Sure.
Can you tell me what the somewhat-high rating is for the region? What do you see in other cities? Is it in that range?
Sure. If, you know, it would be easier, because that varies with the very high. So could I give you a combination on the two?
Yep, yep.
Okay, normally, we expect to see that in other communities at about 50% to 60%, 65% that range.
For the combined two?
Yeah, when you combine the two.
Thanks.
We asked next about city services, and asked residents to rate them, if they were familiar with the service, as either excellent, good, which is positive, or only fair or poor, which is negative. And again, this chart is organized in such a way that we really want to see an ocean of blue rather than a red tide. And that's exactly what we see here. For the most part, the ratings on city services are exemplary. They're among the highest that we have in the metropolitan area. Where Adana, though, is exceptional is in terms of the uniformity of those 90% ratings, except in two areas. The quality and the taste of water, which we saw was a bit of a problem two years ago, remains to be a problem. In fact, a couple of our phoneers were intrigued with the descriptions of your water and wondered where we were getting our water in the phone bank. So 67% indicated that it was excellent or good, 33% only fair or poor. And then, the common, the common theme right across the metropolitan area, repair and patching of city streets. Keep in mind that you have almost 60% favorable to 40% unfavorable. The norm on that now across metro is the reverse, 40% favorable to 60% unfavorable. So overall, then, city services are very, very well-regarded, which harkens back, then, to what we saw with respect to the value of city services, linked in, then, with the benign tax climate. Would people support a tax increase to maintain services at their current level? And last time, we had a plurality that indicated that, yes, they would be willing to, 45 to 36. This time, you have the highest level of favoring a tax increase to maintain city services across the metropolitan area. 65% indicated they would favor it, 30% opposed, 5% were unsure. Again, it's a testimony to the quality of the city services here, and also the way in which people perceive their property taxes in comparison to other communities. How do people feel about redevelopment? Well, redevelopment efforts in the city, two years ago, almost 60% indicated that they thought they were either excellent or good, gave it a favorable rating. Now, we're up to 83%. So we've had a major shift, and it is a statistically significant shift. It also propels the city right to the top of the metro area in terms of favorable ratings of redevelopment. 24%, however, rate the redevelopment as either only fair or poor. That didn't change at all. What happened is the uncertainty dropped down to literally nothing, from 17% in 2011 to 3% in 2013.
Dr. Morris?
Yes, Dr. Morris, is there a reason why you do not make a distinction with that question? Because I noted in the, that unsolicited answers that people gave, or when they were asked to give those one-word or two-word, the "why" question, that some people seemed to think the question was about residential redevelopment, and some people seemed to think that it was about commercial redevelopment. So any reason why that question is asked in a general way?
For the most part, just for comparative purposes across metro. But a number of cities now have begun to split it between residential and commercial. That might be an idea in a future survey, to break that down into two questions.
I didn't know if the confusion or the kind of categories that people sorted themselves into was part of the data, and that's part of why I asked the question.
We did take a look at that sort, in terms of how they rated the redevelopment in the city, and found that the sort really had no impact whatsoever. If you were concerned about residential redevelopment, you were no more likely to give a negative rating than you were if you were concerned about commercial redevelopment. What about financial incentives for redevelopment? Well, you had a working majority, two years ago, 56% that indicated they would support financial incentives for targeted redevelopment. This time, you're up to 2/3 of the community, 66% indicating that they would support it, with 29% indicating they would oppose. The support level at 66% also ties you for the highest across the metropolitan area. Do people support single-family housing redevelopment? And the answer to that is yes. 71% support the redevelopment efforts on single-family housing, 25% oppose. And once again, if that 10% strongly oppose, harkens back to those folks earlier that said the most serious problem was housing teardowns, and also correlated directly with lower quality-of-life ratings. But in general, 71% do support your efforts. What about higher-density housing? 57% are supportive, while 39% are opposed. The 57% is a large majority in comparison to your neighbors. What we have in a number of suburbs along the first, in the first tier, and in the second tier, are much more shaky majorities or even pluralities in favor. So let's say anywhere between 45% and 42% in general. But you still almost have 39%, just shy of 40%, who are indicating opposition. What's the most serious public safety issue? And again, we're making a comparison between the two years. Now, this year, there was a downturn, if we go directly to the bottom of the chart, in terms of those that said there were no public safety issues. That went from 35% down to 22%. So obviously, there were other things on people's minds. Wasn't burglary. Burglary dropped from 26 to 17. Speeding and traffic violations, however, did go up by 8%, significant change. Also, juvenile crime doubled from 6 to 12, also a significant change. So while we have less people saying you don't have any public safety issues facing the community, the concern about speeding and traffic violation in particular, and the growing concern about juvenile crime needs to be watched in the future. Parks and facilities usage, this was a double question. We asked people if they were using a particular facility, and then, among the users, we asked them whether they had a favorable or unfavorable rating of that particular facility. Now, as you can see, the bars are of different length. The reason being is that some of your facilities are used much more widely than other of your facilities are. So the Fred Richards Golf Course at 23%, very, very low usage in comparison to, let's say, your neighborhood parks, which stand at 84%. If we go down that list, the same thing about the ocean of blue versus the red tide holds. You want to see as much blue as possible, and you have an exceptional amount of blue. The criticisms are minor at best with respect to users of each of those facilities. And they tended to be very, very idiosyncratic. At the Adana Arts Center, the 1% didn't like a particular helper. At the golf course, it was a noisy party behind them. At larger community fields, there was an umpire and a noisy neighbor. Those kinds of things tended to come into play. In general, though, your facilities are just exceptionally well-regarded. And in fact, you have one to two facilities that have no critics. The Centennial Lakes Park at 66%, 0% indicating they're unfavorable, and the Braemar Golf Course at 40% was 0% unfavorable. How do people feel about the ease of getting place to place? And we asked this in terms of walking and bicycling. Now, among all residents, when we asked about walking from place to place, 86%, which is one of the high that we have across metro, indicated a good rating, a good or excellent rating, a positive rating, while 13% were more negative. When we asked walkers, and these were the folks that said they were frequent walkers, that is, we had them tell us how often they walked, 46% rated as excellent, you'll notice that's twice as high as the other excellent ratings, 36% indicated good, but we have a few more critics this time, with 17% indicating only fair or poor. The key on this, though, is that among your frequent walkers, you almost have 50% who rate the ability to walk in this community as excellent. Now, what about bicycling? Well, we have 79% of the community that rates it either excellent or good. Notice now that the excellence have gone down a little bit, from 23% in the case of walking to 9% in the case of biking. Uncertainty is also higher, because we had a number of households that don't use bicycles. And the only fair or poor, relatively low, at 6%. Now, again, we took a look at those that told us they were frequent bicyclists or occasional bicycles, bicyclists. We had to bring the occasional category in, because you had so few frequent bicyclists. 13% indicated they thought that the, that the ability to bicycle within the community was excellent. Not as high as we saw among walkers when they evaluated the ability to walk. 74% thought it was good, and from 6% up to 13% doubled the number who thought that the facilities were only fair or poor. So bicycling tends to be a little bit more of a mixed picture than the ability to walk within this community. Do people feel empowered? That is, do they feel they can have a way of impacting city policy other than by voting? 84%, which is incredibly high, it's higher than any other community by about 15 points currently, said yes, they felt that they could have a way of impacting, rather than simply going to the voter, to the voting box. 12% said no. And of that, a quarter are those that don't want to. They don't want to have a say. We talked about them last time. Those are your small-D Democrats that will elect you and then come back and see how you've done four years later. And then, finally, 4% were unsure. But the 84% is just outstanding in terms of people feeling empowered within a community. City staff rating next? We asked residents how they would rate the city staff, and what we found was that 91% rated the city staff as either excellent or good. And that's primarily unchanged from two years ago. Although, in the staff's defense, it's very, very hard to see a change pushing up above 90% on something like that, and it is the highest-rated staff that we have anywhere. 6% rated the staff as only fair or poor, 3% were unsure. When we took a look at those folks that said they had had a lot of contact with city staff, the excellent ratings went right through the ceiling, up to 55%. So in general, then, city staff is very, very well-regarded. Let's take a look at where people are getting their information from. And what we found was that the city newsletter is utilized or relied upon by 35%, about 1/3 of the community. Local newspapers are relied upon by 37%. So those are the two big sources of information about what goes on at city hall. Website was mentioned by 12%. Word of mouth, your grapevine is not as high as in other communities, it's still present. Cable TV by 4%, that's much higher than what we're finding in other communities. And the Star Tribune plays a significant role here at 5%. But in general, the two major sources for reaching over 70% of your residents are the newsletter, on the one hand, and the local newspaper, on the other. Now, what's the preferred information source? Well, we have a reversal on this now. Local newspaper is still preferred by 28%, but we have 38% indicating that they would prefer to get their information out of the city newsletter. Again, if we take a look at those preferences, we're at 66%, or almost 2/3 of the community. Website is mentioned by 13%, email by 6%, and those were younger residents of the community and newer residents of the community. Cable TV actually was mentioned by 5, and the grapevine really didn't change all that much, but you still have 4% who are going to hold on to those vines, come what may. So in general, then, what can we say? Well, there's a number of things. But the first overarching theme of this is that the city is still regarded by its residents as a special place. Your ratings are still among the highest that we have across the metropolitan area. And even with the quality-of-life rating having gone down a bit because of issues now that are emerging, that people feel are having an impact on that general rating, you still rank in a tie position, or a relative tie position, to the second-place suburban community. You and your neighbor St. Louis Park are the top two highest, different by 1%. But again, if we take a look now at the breakdown of city operation, city services, extraordinarily well-regarded, tax climate, benign, value of city services, regarded as being exceptional, the operation of the city is among the most efficient and effective that we have across the metropolitan area. When all is said and done, if we take a look at problems, and we take a look at decision-makers and the decisions that are being made, there is a huge reservoir of trust that 30-some percent that said that there were no serious issues, those boosters, is unique in the community, in the metropolitan area. We have no other community that gets as high as even 25% on that particular question. To be it 1/3 of the residents who are with you through thick and through thin, is just a testimony to the good governance that has gone on in Adana for a long, long time. Thank you.
All right, questions for Dr. Morris? Very interesting. No, thanks for coming this evening.
Thank you.
And very valuable information. Member Swenson?
Well, I just thought I'd offer a note of congratulations to the employees sitting in here and the other employees that have gone home for the day, since a portion of that certainly speaks to the good job you guys have been doing. So thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Member Swenson. Good catch. And thank all of you. And thank all of you as well. So, thanks, Dr. Morris.
Thanks, Mark.
All right. We've got a couple of public hearings this evening. And the first matter before us is really a revisiting of a piece of property at four zero zero five sixty-fifth Street West, which is on the corner of sixty-fifth Street and France. And this has been to the Planning Commission. And Director Teague, you have this matter. And when the proponent comes forward, based on the time that you used at the Planning Commission, we're thinking around fifteen minutes for your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council. Again, this is a site you're all very familiar with. It is kitty corner from the Southdale Fairview Hospital. Recently, the council rezoned this property to PUD and approved a five-story, sixty-two foot tall medical office building, over a hundred thousand square feet in size. These are some renderings of what that approved project looks like in the medical office building with an attached four-to-five level parking ramp on the west side of the site. Quick look at the site plan. So this was approved not too long ago. The new proposal for this site includes a similar-looking building, but it's a change in the use to a hundred-and-ninety-five-unit senior housing project. A hundred-and-eleven of the units would be for independent and assisted living, sixty-six units for transitional care, skilled nursing and memory care, and there would be eighteen care suites associated with the hospital and potentially Twin City Orthopedic to the north. The building is somewhat similar to the proposed or to the approved building, as shown on the screen. Again, it's five stories, sixty-two feet tall. Difference includes this pedestrian skyway link that would connect to the parking ramp to the north and eventually into the hospital. The housing ramp is replaced with housing on the west side of the site. The entrance to the parking ramp would be on the north wing under the building, and parking would be underground. Just to quickly look at a few views of the building, this is from the Pointe de France site. This is from sixty-fifth. Another view from Pointe de France, looking down onto a patio area. These are all similar to the sketch plan review that was reviewed by the city council. This is a look from the Cornelia Apartments further to the west and the site plan. This is a rendering that the area highlighted in blue is the previously approved plan and the new building. While it's been slightly modified, gives you a general idea that the footprint of this new proposal is smaller. It's over fifteen thousand square foot feet in size for a reduction. The proposed density here is eighty-three units an acre, which is pretty high for Edina. This would be our most dense development for senior housing. The site is guided for regional medical uses, and senior housing is not allowed in our regional medical district. So a comprehensive plan amendment is requested. So the request before the council, it's the first phase of a two-step process. This first step requires four votes of the city council, and that's because of the comprehensive plan amendment. So it would be the amendment to allow senior housing in the regional medical district, preliminary rezoning to amend that PUD zoning district, and preliminary development plan. If approved by the council tonight, they would then come back with a second step for final rezoning, final development plan, and an ordinance that would establish the PUD district for this site. So it's at that time that specific conditions would be placed on the project if approved. This was reviewed by our Planning Commission at their first meeting in July, and the Planning Commission made a motion to approve the project, both the comprehensive plan amendment and the rezoning. And that motion failed on a vote of four to five. There were several conditions that were attached to that motion, and the applicant has tried to address those conditions as best they can, and I'll step you through that, some of those changes that have been made. And it also presents the site plan as well. The original review, project reviewed by the Planning Commission showed two chillers in this west, on the west side of the site where the loading area is. This is one of the bigger concerns of the Planning Commission, was the impact to the Cornelia Apartments to the west, just all of the activity taking place here, a lot of concern in that regard. So there were two chillers located within this loading area. This is the loading dock into the site. They have relocated those chillers to the roof of the building, kind of above the entrance. This is a look of what that chiller would look like on top of the building, would be well-screened as well. Concern over views from the Pointe de France. Secondly, there was some question about balconies and setbacks. They've adjusted those, so the numbers in the staff report should be accurate in regard to any balcony setbacks. They have shifted the building further away from this west lot line. They've shifted the building six feet and are introducing a podium height here. So the previous request had a forty-two-foot setback to these buildings, to the west side of the building. They've increased that six feet for floors one and two. Floors three through five would have a fifty-eight-foot setback, so there would be that podium effect on both of these wings here to pull the building further away. You may recall that the parking ramp for the previous proposal was to be fifteen feet from that lot line. So there's quite a separation from the previous approved plan. They have, there was a concern over the project engaging the street. Originally, there was a bistro proposed in the inside of the building. They're suggesting a coffee shop and bistro now at the corner of the building to try to invite people in as they're walking along France Avenue, to try to beef up that pedestrian-friendly part of the project. They have also, in regard to concerns over screening of the loading area, proposing ten to twelve coniferous trees that would be planted on the Cornelia Place apartment site. So they've beefed up the landscaping to provide additional screening. They've also shifted the resident entrance, which was previously on the south wing down here, up to the north to separate it from the loading areas. So that separation has been made. There was concern over the hours of loading, and they are agreeable to limiting the hours from nine AM to four PM to minimize impacts in the early morning hours or late evening. They have added a third entrance, widened the driveway here to try to get people in and out a little bit easier and quicker. Another concern was in regard to the sustainable design of the building. And they have pledged to try to provide a benchmark of at least an eighteen percent savings, energy savings in the building. You may recall with the buyer-lease project, they had pledged a ten percent increase, so nearly double of what we've recently approved with the buyer-lease project. So again, nothing that was pledged at the Planning Commission, so that's a new addition as well. The number of units have been reduced from a hundred-and-ninety-seven to a hundred-and-ninety-five, just a slight decrease. Also, in regard to affordable housing, previously, four affordable units were contemplated. They're suggesting an increase to ten percent of the assisted living, which would total eleven. So they're pledging to try to meet that level. So those are some of the issues that have been addressed based on Planning Commission Oh, just to show you, another change was to the loading area, they had previously proposed a pergola-type structure over the loading area to provide screening. They've extended this green roof out, so the parking would take place, or the loading would take place, within this garage area, so additional screening that's been beefed So primary issues for consideration is the comprehensive plan amendment to allow senior housing as a permitted use in the regional medical district reasonable, and is the density acceptable? And is the proposed rezoning to PUD appropriate for the site? As part of the sketch plan review, the council may recall that you had asked for some comparisons to other cities for how they dealt with density and floor area ratios for senior housing. The applicant has submitted about a dozen examples of construction in Minneapolis for senior housing. The FAR ranges within those provided, and those are all in your packet this evening, range between two and four, so quite a high FAR. The FAR that's contemplated here is two-point-two, so it would be within that range of the Minneapolis provision. Should mention that the comprehensive plan currently has a max of one-point-zero, so it would be nearly a doubling of the density allowed. And all of these within Minneapolis are over a hundred units an acre. Staff also contacted some adjacent cities. St. Louis Park, they allow a PUD up to seventy-five units an acre in their high-density or mixed-use areas, and then on a case-by-case basis, will consider density over seventy-five units. The rendering on the screen is an example of a project in the west end where the density is a hundred-and-eleven units per acre. This is just a one-acre site in St. Louis Park. Minnetonka, they define high density in their comprehensive plan as twelve units, anything over twelve units an acre. They don't have an example within the city that has a density that's contemplated here, but it is allowed in their comprehensive plan, again, based on a case-by-case basis. Lastly, the city of Bloomington, they generally allow fifty units an acre in general unless it's within a high-density residential area. Then they regulate it by FAR, and they suggest a one-point-five to two-point-zero FAR. And they also have a provision that density may be increased above two on a case-by-case basis if below-grade parking is provided, if there's some park or plaza space provided, affordable housing, sustainable design, or public art. And they have most recently approved three projects with an FAR over two, those being the Reflections on Thirty-Fourth Avenue, where they allow up to ninety, that project has ninety-five units an acre. The Summer House on Ninety-Eighth and Lyndale, that's fifty-nine units an acre. And most recently, the Janice Project, that's the Penn and American new apartment building that's recently built, that is seventy-three units an acre. So given these examples, consideration for higher density for senior housing on a case-by-case would seem reasonable. So within the comprehensive plan, the suggested language would allow senior housing on a case-by-case basis for the density. And the language that's highlighted in red, that would be new, the new language within the comprehensive plan. So the definition of senior housing, and this was recommended by the Planning Commission as part of the motion for approval of the project, would be senior housing shall be defined as independent living, housing for seniors, including assisted living, memory care, and skilled nursing, similar to what's proposed here. And so for the density, density for senior housing shall be based on proximity to hospitals, proximity to low-density uses, utilities capability, level of transit service available, impact on adjacent roads. Other desired items that would potentially allow greater density would include providing below-grade parking, provision of park or open space, providing affordable housing, sustainable design principles, and the provision of public art. So using that as a basis here, a case could be made for high-density use on this site. Again, it provides the skyway connection to connect to the medical use across the street. WSB has done a traffic study of the project and determined that the impact to the roads would be less than the approved medical site. Chuck Rickert is here from WSB to answer any questions that you may have in regard to the parking or traffic. Bus service is available to the site, and again, we talked about the sustainable design that they're pledging. In regard to public art, I didn't mention. The original request or the originally approved plan had a provision for public art on sixty-fifth. They've moved that right to the intersection of sixty-fifth and France, again, to try to engage the public on that intersection and being a real focal point of the project. Again, they've pledged to increase their affordable housing, and the parking would be below grade. So those are the same justifications for the PUD as well. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the comprehensive plan amendment, subject to the findings and conditions in the staff report, as well as the preliminary rezoning. Again, the Planning Commission motion to approve the project failed on a vote of four to five. With that, I can stand for questions.
And to be clear, with the changes that have been made by the applicant, the staff is recommending approval?
Correct.
Is that correct? All right. Member Bennett has a question for you.
Director Teague, could you please bring back the slide that shows the senior housing building density summary comparison?
I had a...
It's paged. Let's see, I can give you the hard copy. There. Okay. So I'm noting that Ebenezer Park Apartments is obviously higher density. They seem, from the photograph shown, it appears they get some of that from height. It has a unit differentiation similar to this. I know there was quite a bit of discussion at the Planning Commission about independent living and whether or not the lower traffic and other lower impacts of memory care and assisted living would also apply to independent living. And then I noticed with the Ebenezer Seniors Tower, again, we're talking about a tower. So, and that's just slightly less. Kenwood Congregate, fewer medically-related units, but still much greater height than we're talking about here. Walker Methodist Health, all skilled nursing. So to the Planning Commission's questions and discussion about types of housing causing, resulting in different impacts, I just wanted that to be noted. And then finally, Augustana Healthcare, impossible to see the height with that photograph, but again, noting that there's a very different composition of the units. Do you have any thoughts?
I don't on that, other than, you know, the density is more than anything that we've seen in our more market-rate projects. And based on the information from Mr. Rickert, the impact would be less for traffic, and this does seem to be a good use that fits into this district, so staff would be supportive.
I note that in the Planning Commission motion, they were recommending there be some work with the definition of assisted living, and that motion obviously failed. So what staff has brought forward here is actually what was brought forward to the Planning Commission, correct?
It was the language that was used in the motion.
Okay. But wasn't that modified in terms of the independent living?
It included independent living.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Other questions for Director Teague? Member Sprague?
Thank you. So back to the retail component. They're coming back with a bistro on the front and some other retail shops. How many of those are open to the public?
It's my understanding that the coffee bistro on the corner here would be open to the public. The public access would be at this point here?
Mm-hmm.
So this area would be available to the public.
And then there's some type of controlled access beyond the wall, or how does that?
Right. That would be down in this location here.
Okay. So the fitness, it looks like, is in the public corridor as well, in the pharmacy. So it looks like there's three retail spaces opening off of that public corridor?
It is. I don't believe the fitness would be open to the public, potentially the pharmacy gift shop.
Okay. I can ask the applicant as well. On the affordable housing calculation, they've included the a hundred-and-eleven units of senior AL and IL, but not the sixty-six units of memory care, skilled nursing? What was the rationale for that? Because I know, at least with memory care, there are elderly waiver units.
That's true. That's usually our starting point, is ten percent of the total units within the building. But at least they have increased from the original proposal to the Planning Commission was just for four units. They've pledged to at least attempt to increase that to eleven units.
So the starting point for us would be to include all the units in the calculation, and that would yield how many? Is it eighteen?
Yeah. If we were to do ten percent, it would be about nineteen.
About nineteen. And then on the terrorist parking structure, where they're pulling in for the deliveries, is that an amenity for residents? It's, I don't want to say terrorists, it's... It's, I don't want to say terrorist, it's a green roof or something. Is that an outdoor amenity right there available to the residents?
That is.
It is?
It is.
So they've got that, and they also have the back, on the south side, the terrace?
Correct.
And then the memory care garden is just for that wing?
That's correct.
Okay. Good. And then on the sustainability, is it possible for us to somehow designate one of our staff as a design team member within the EDA, the Excel program, so that we can stay within the loop of how they're reaching that goal of 18%? Is that something we might request?
We can certainly do that. That's something, since we're seeing that on a continual basis with all of our projects here, that might be something good that I'd be involved in.
Okay. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Member Brendel.
Just a couple of quick ones, because then we can hear from those who would like to say something. What, did the height of the crown increase by putting the chiller in there, which is a great idea, because it does get it as far away from residential, the adjacent residencies as possible? But did it raise the crown?
I believe that has raised slightly. I'll let the applicant give the detail.
Okay, so we'll hear a little about that?
That it has slightly.
Okay. Let's see. That's all, oh, oh, oh. If you go back and show the public access, it looks to me like there are several businesses. There's a beauty shop, there's a pub, there's a coffee bistro, and there's a fitness center, and there's access to bathrooms and a bank, is it? No, the bank isn't accessible, but the bathrooms, the fitness, the coffee bistro, the beauty barber shop, and the pub appear to be public access. So can we interpret anything inside that, you know, to the north of that door as being available to the public?
That is my understanding. Again, these are new site plans from what we've seen at the Planning Commission, but that's my understanding.
Great. Because we, I mean, we had hoped to have that interconnect, that connection with the public on that corner, and so I'm happy to see that.
Right. The primary users will be residents of the facility, but it is available.
Right. Thank you.
Members Sprague?
Following up on that point, Member Brendel, since the majority of users are from the facility, is there not a parking requirement there?
There is, and that might be something that we want to take a look at, should this be approved, that we take a look at the parking again, to make sure we are providing enough parking, and we would utilize WSB again to give us a determination if this is going to be truly available to the public. Will they be parking on-site, within the ramp? We'll want to get a clear handle on that, at least at the time of final approval, and maybe Mr. Rickert could comment about that tonight.
Perfect.
Other questions? Member Brendel?
No.
All right. I've got a couple for you, Director Teague. Concerned about the definition of senior housing, this may be for Soren. Senior housing by definition may include independent living, assisted living, memory care, and skilled nursing. I know at least one element of the proposed service is transitional care. Somebody goes into Twin Cities Orthopedics across the way and has a hip replacement or a knee replacement, and they need to rehab, and they go over there for transitional care, and I'm wondering if you think that the definition of senior housing would include that kind of service to those customers under, I suppose, skilled nursing?
I think I can address that one.
All right.
This is a PUD ordinance, and part of the ordinance is carrying forward all the uses that are allowed in the regional medical district, so that use would be allowed through the regional medical district as a kind of a carry-through.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Trash pickup, is that in the garage area?
That's my understanding, yes.
All right, we can go over that with the proponent. And then the level of density, I think, was higher than we anticipated. Remember, some early discussions in sketch plan review about 50 units per acre, and now we're up to 80?
Actually, at sketch plan review, they were contemplating 207 units, so they've reduced it slightly.
My fault. Faulty memory. So with the project that we approved before, the medical office building, I thought somebody in the Planning Commission asked if parking, the structure, the parking structure had been included in the computation of number of units per acre, what would that have done with that particular project? Would that have had any impact at all?
If the parking structure...
The parking garage, I remember it being kind of a unusual question.
If it were included in, say, an FAR kind of arrangement?
Maybe that was what it was.
Yeah.
Or a ratio computation, not the...
Right. Then it would be somewhat similar.
Somewhat similar?
Right.
Okay.
The volume of the structure would actually be larger with the previous proposal, as we saw the footprint. Let's see if we can go back to that. The area outlined in blue here, in addition to the orange, that's the previous approved plan.
Yeah.
And the area highlighted in orange, that's the new project.
Okay. All right. Was there any discussions of Planning Commission about ramp capacity over at Fairview Southdale Hospital?
Yes, and as part of the expansion of the hospital, it was determined that they have about 300 to 400 spaces that are typically not used even on their most, their busiest times. So there is some capacity in the ramp over at Fairview that could provide some relief here for this project.
Okay. And how about construction parking? Was that discussed?
We did not get into that level of detail, but that might be something that we would require, but the second step of this is putting together some kind of a construction management plan and how that's handled.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Director Teague?
Not right now.
All right. Thank you. We'll bring forward the proponent, and let's think about 15 minutes or so. Mr. Bernardi? Yeah, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. My name is Luigi Bernardi, president of Aurora Investments, located at 5215 Edina Industrial Boulevard, Edina. Thank you for your time tonight and your patience, as we are here before you again after having spent considerable time, effort, money on the approval of a medical office building last year. I am sure that you are all surprised, as I was, on the switch of uses for this property soon after our approvals, but after turning to the marketplace in search of tenants, Ebenezer, a world-class provider of senior care, showed interest in the site. In analyzing this new use and acknowledging the financial strength of Ebenezer and its backing by Fairview Health Systems, we have come to the conclusion that it makes sense to pursue. Not only is it good for our organization to leasing the entire project to one tenant before even breaking ground, but it is a great benefit to the community by taking care of a real need. It solidifies and contributes to the financial health of a major employer and contributor to the Edina community, Fairview Hospital, and thereby to the city of Edina. It completes the housing needs in this area with Pointe of France condominiums, Cornelia Place Apartments, and hopefully now Aurora on France. I believe we have significantly addressed the concerns from our neighbors and the city, and I believe that we've gone above and beyond what is expected. We are proposing to build a magnificent structure that the city will be proud of, using quality materials that typical developers shy away from because of cost. We are not the typical developers who build a project quickly and then sell it as soon as it's built and leased. We spend more because we are long-term holders of real estate. Our offices are located in Edina, and we will make sure that it's run and maintained in a first-class manner, as all the rest of our properties have been in the last 50 years. This site has already been greatly improved by the demolition of two tired-out buildings with seas of asphalt. Let's complete the masterpiece on this gateway site of Edina tonight by approving this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bernardi.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Steve Michaels of Mountain Development, 3600 Minnesota Drive, Edina, Minnesota, Suite 525. It is a pleasure to be before you tonight after we've fine-tuned our plans from the Planning Commission meeting last month. We believe we've made 12 substantial modifications to the plans we'd like to show you and get your input on this evening. One of the issues was the France Avenue gathering area. We believe that the new patio outside the main intersection with the art feature, the bistro area will be a major gathering area, both for hospital employees, residents in the area, and then residents in our building. The building will also have other gathering areas. We'll have a chef demonstration kitchen. We have added an outside gas fireplace to our south terrace area, and we've created some other sitting areas around the building for the residents to go in and out as they have their leisure time. Our bistro area, we plan to serve Starbucks beverages. This is a major step. We feel will be a nice magnet to that store. The hospital employees can certainly use that area. We've allocated that corner of our building to be a secure area for the four or five businesses along France Avenue and then along the north area. We have been working with Well Seon. They're a 50-and-over fitness company. They have a new franchise called Well Camp, and we anticipate using them for our fitness component on that east side of the building. We are anticipating pharmacy and gift shop also, in addition to the barber beauty shop. Each of those are available. We anticipate, though, that anyone using those shops would be hospital employees or walking from the other residential buildings in the area, so we don't see a lot of parking pressure for patrons that would be using those retail services. Our building size is based on the continuum of care concept. The building's designed to go from independent living, assisted living, transitional care, memory care, and hospice. There are many benefits, both to the family and to the residents, to be able to stay in the building over time as the resident needs change. We've taken the best market information to arrive at the mix that we've shown you on these plans. To be able to offer a good, cost-effective medical model, we need the number of units proposed to be able to spread out the operational costs associated with these five levels of service. We have taken steps to be a good neighbor to Cornelia Apartments and also to Pointe of France. I've met with the groups numerous times, shown them the latest plans that are before you. Ebenezer has delivered a letter to both of those groups, offering six common areas within the building as available for those two communities. The Osher Lifelong Learning from University of Minnesota provides lectures, will have music events, the home theater, beauty shop, and the other retail that I've mentioned. We have offered to screen the Pointe of France cooling tower that faces our common property line. We do have the same goals as our neighbors. We're striving to reduce any undue noise and provide a quiet residential setting. We believe that by working together as compatible neighbors, we're discussing using the same trash service, same days, so that we can get those service vehicles in and out. There are other service areas that we can work together on, and we feel we've got good dialogue with both of those neighbors. Yes, we have restricted our major deliveries between nine and four. Two days a week, we have trash and food service, and then we have our short-term deliveries with three new parking stalls out at the front door, which is on our north side. So UPS, any oxygen delivery, all the quick in-and-outs, we'll be having those deliveries at that north entrance. Within your information, we do have a city benefits narrative. It has 18 specific points that are a true benefit to the city. One of those is the new building. It will be a business. It will have 50 new jobs associated with running that business. We will be providing new senior housing options. Just as we have multiple grocery stores within the community, we need choices for our seniors, and we're providing new services and new types of senior housing adjacent to the hospital. The building is within the new Southdale II tax increment district. The new taxes from this building will be $350,000 higher, new taxes over and above the current taxes. Those dollars do go into a designated fund each year until the year 2022, so that will be seven years of new taxes at or above that $350,000 a year amount. On parking, it is an interesting perspective that the two older buildings that have been taken down had a surface parking capacity of 138 parking stalls. That happens to be the exact number code for our new building. All of our parking will be underground. We hear a lot of comments tonight about density. Planning guidelines on units per acre, floor area ratio are generally used to regulate both parking and traffic. We feel these guidelines do not necessarily apply to senior housing or to congregate care. So our skilled nursing facilities, as WSB has discussed, who we feel is one of the most reputable engineers in town, is very comfortable both with our parking and our traffic. We do have more data on the 11 buildings shown on your green and yellow sheets, if you want to discuss more in detail on floor area ratio or units per acre. A good example that's not on your sheets would be Edina Park Plaza Senior. It's a 1.8-acre site, and there's 195 units on that parcel. It's a building that fits very well into the community, along with the other buildings that we've shown on the yellow and green sheets. Our overriding goal certainly is to provide an individual environment for our residents. We're looking forward to creating a new, very nice, quality building within the community. Each one of us on our development team is here. We can answer your questions. We feel we've put our best effort and all our new state-of-the-art ideas into the project. So we thank you for your consideration, and I can answer any questions before the next speaker.
Thank you. Member Brendel?
Skyway.
Yes.
Thank you. In our discussion a month ago, two months ago, when we first looked at this, that was a piece of it that was going to be very important, allowing residents of this building to get to Fairview Southdale easily and without going outside. So they take the Skyway over to the Fairview ramp, and how do they access the Fairview Skyway from there?
Councilmember Brendel, within your packet of information, we do have a sketch that does show the Skyway going into Level Three of the parking ramp. It's a very natural area that brings it right in by the elevator lobby and then right into a controlled environment. So we only have about 100 lineal feet to go between our building into a very natural connection into that ramp.
All right. Thank you.
Members Sprague?
Just wanted to confirm, public access is available up to that threshold just adjacent to the bank? So there's public access to the coffee bistro and those other retail amenities in the front?
Councilmember Sprague, yes. We have inserted a small door. We can also use those elevators to get up to Level Three of our building to come across on the Skyway. For the viability of the coffee shop and the product that we're planning on serving, we are going to be catering to the hospital employee on their shift change.
Thank you.
Thank you. The manner in which you answered a question for Member Brendel made me want to inquire of you further about the proposed Skyway. So I take it the Skyway would meet the typical standards that we see in a Skyway now, that it would be heated and temperature-controlled? Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, yes, it would be.
All right. And when you move across from your building, potentially, to the hospital parking ramp, you come in on the third level, is that the level that the Skyway is on for the hospital? I thought... I thought, are they on three or on two?
They are on, well, they label there as a little bit different, but they are on Level Three.
So, all right. So no one is taking an elevator up or down to manage the skyway system?
Correct.
All right.
Yes.
Thank you. You're proposing a building that has, I think you said, 53 employees. The parking ratios required, and you specified the number of underground stalls you were going to have at 138. Where are those 53 employees going to park?
Mr. Mayor, 53 includes three shifts. The highest shift is the daytime shift. We anticipate about 28 to 30 during that shift. The other shifts will all be parked underneath. We believe that the 138 parking stalls is more than adequate. York Gardens, which was about almost a year and a half old right now, has excess capacity in their parking area underneath. So we believe that there's more than enough parking based on the code determination.
All right. Mr. Rickert, would you come up here and verify that the code would allow the developer to have employees use that underground parking? Or is that a residential requirement that we're looking at in our code?
Mayor, members of the council, the code does include employees also. So it's employees and the residential units. So that's included in that number.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may add, there is a eight-and-a-half-by-11 grid chart that outlines the code provision both for employee and for resident. So we're very comfortable. We are running a business. We do need to be able to provide parking both for the employees, visitors, and residents. So I'd like to introduce Susan Farr of Ebenezer, if she could
Sure.
Come to the podium and make several comments on Ebenezer's business.
Ms. Farr, come up and speak on behalf of Ebenezer for a couple of minutes.
I'll make it fast. I know timing. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Susan Farr, 2722 Park Avenue. That's our corporate office. And again, a year and a half ago, I just kind of want to talk to you about the vision of Edina. We built York Gardens. It is going very, very well. We cannot even take any more on the waiting list for the memory care because, of course, that is very need-driven, and people can't wait six months to a year. And that has gone very well, and we also have a waitlist for our assisted living there. And we've been excellent neighbors to 7500 York, and that has worked out very, very well. And so we are excited to have this phenomenal location, being, of course, that we're affiliated with the Fairview Hospital. And we are excited that the employees have another option to come over and have coffee, lunch, you know, stop in at the bistro or the pub before they go home. And then also, too, our employees can park in that Fairview ramp there, because that was asked before. But just overall, too, just to know that whenever we build anything anywhere, if we own it or manage it, and we would be managing this, we do focus groups, and it's very important for us to talk to the families, employees, and go back to buildings that we own or manage, saying, what would we do differently if we were to do it again? And so we never build them the same. And one thing that Steve Michaels had mentioned is the family member is very busy with their career. They're very busy with sports. They're very busy with their children, their grandchildren, their hobbies, and they don't want to move and move their parent. Or if someone has surgery, for example, at Twin Cities Orthopedics, they can't take a lunch break every day and come and get them bundled up and take them out for therapy. They want the therapy to be there. They want us to deliver care to the room. They don't want to be moving and moving and changing utilities. So it's very important that they have choice, that we have the state-of-the-art technology included. A lot of them are also snowbirds or wannabe snowbirds, and they want to be able to log on to the computer and look at mom or dad's care. They also want to be able to Skype with the RN if there is an issue going on. So what we have done is we have responded and continue to respond to what's different every time, because we have to listen to our consumer, and things have really changed. And it will continue to change in this industry. Thank you. Any questions?
Questions for Ms. Farr? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Farr, would you come back up, please, for a moment?
Yes.
Would you comment on how your parking is working out over at York Gardens in terms of adequate space availability?
Correct. Some people do take the bike, you know, ride their bike. There are a few that take the bus. The parking is, we have extra. We even can take someone's boat or snowmobile now, because, but the staff does use the majority of the parking. A lot of the people have said, well, I just don't use my car anymore. We have the van, and that takes me to the bank, takes me shopping. We already have that virtual clinic inside, and the nurse practitioner doctor's coming every month, so I'm not going out to as many clinic visits. So the parking is more than adequate. It has worked out very well.
All right. Thank you. No, Mr. Farr, no relation. You were coming up. At least I assume no relation.
No relation, thank you. I'll actually cut my presentation short, because I just still have time. You've heard very good succinct presentation from Planar Teague already. I just am going to clarify a couple of questions that I've heard come up this evening already, specifically regarding the skyway connection. It does attach to the third level of that parking structure on the Fairview Southdale parking ramp, which is the same level as the skyway that crosses over France Avenue. We're proposing a new Is that better?
Yes.
The skyway does cross over onto the third level of parking structure. We're proposing a short enclosure to get to that elevator lobby, which then crosses over to Fairview Southdale Hospital. As a matter of the cubic volume of the building enclosure and the square footage, that statistic, about 23%, 25% was accurate regarding the comparison of the medical office building to the senior care building. We have about 290,000 square feet proposed in our parking deck plus medical office building under our prior approval, and the senior care building is less than 225,000 square feet, which is a 23% reduction in square footage, resulting in about a 25% reduction in the cubic volume of the mass of the building that will be seen from any direction around the building. So there are two very important metrics on that. You all have a booklet in front of you with your graphics. I'm not going to go through those already, but on page 20, Councilmember Brendel asked a question about the height of the new crown. And for those of you interested, we did a very detailed analysis of the heights. I may have misquoted the page number. I'm sorry. Page 25 on your booklet. It's a black and white page, but we have some red and blue markings on that indicating very specific dimensions above grade, above the curb line, and other measurements important to staff. And if you look in the lower left-hand corner, you'll see that we have raised our crown. It was already above the building's roof line slightly by about three to five feet under our previous approved sketch plan, anyway. And I've raised it about another eight feet, so that now it's about 12 feet above the ordinary roof line to conceal the HVAC equipment up there. So we have raised that to make that more prominent at that particular corner. And of course, of most interest, it's now a 360-degree screening effect as opposed to just one quadrant of a circle facing that intersection. Okay?
I've got one question for you, Mr. Farr. Others may as well. I was interested, after seeing the chiller at Pointe of France, it looked like the bottom of a Saturn rocket. How you were going to, if this were approved, screen your terrace from the chiller?
While it is certainly true we can't do that at the total height of the chiller, where my finger is here on our site plan, we are interested in two things. One is, of course, maintaining the existing large tree cover. They are deciduous trees only, but along the property line, Pointe of France has those on their property now. They're 30 to 50 feet high, which will help as much as possible. However, for our patio residents that come out, we're going to be putting in a very thick and taller-than-eye-level height of a landscape screen, including some non-deciduous evergreen trees for year-round screening as people are sitting there trying to enjoy themselves.
When I get on the site plan, it looks like there's more distance there than I anticipated between the chiller and the property line. So it looks like you've got some just sort of natural insulation, too. All right, that's all, those are all the questions I had. Anyone else? Mr. Farr, Members Sprague.
Can you walk me through the previously approved setback on the west side in height, and then the proposed setback in height, both at the podium and at the top of the building?
Yes, I can.
Thanks.
These are the black and white civil engineering drawings from the set of documents prepared for the original submittal, indicating a west setback from property line to building face of 42 feet on the west side. The building did have ins and outs to it, and that wall went straight up five stories. If you care to look along in your booklet to page 19, otherwise look at the screen, you'll see our new cross-section indicating that we have increased the setback by shortening our building. Just as a matter of clarification, that verb is important. Planar Teague used the word shifted our building. Our building did not shift to the east. It was shortened to the east, so we did not encroach further on France Avenue. But at that base level, we shortened it by six feet, so we have a 48-foot setback at the lower portion of the building. And then we engaged a podium setback technique, just like we are on France Avenue, so that we have a 58-foot dimension now instead of 42 up to those top three floors. On the left-hand side of the property line graphic there, you can see that the Cornelia Place is set back anywhere from 36 to 76 feet.
So the setback to that first residential unit is 16 feet greater than it was with the sheer wall going up before?
Correct.
Yep. And on the, and by a previously approved plan, I actually meant the parking structure. Do you remember what the setback in the height was on that? And I know we had a Phase One and Phase Two option, but let's say Phase Two, the highest it could have been.
Okay. It was a five-level structure at Phase Two, and each floor averaged 11 feet, I believe. So 55 feet, although one level was near grade.
Yep.
And there's about four feet higher to the top level to get to the spanner height, so that's about a 58, 59-foot tall structure measured from that grade level.
And the setback to the line from the parking ramp was?
I believe Commissioner Teague's at 15 feet, and I agree with that.
Okay.
I believe we can demonstrate that on a site plan if you'd wish.
So you went from 15 to 48 for the building setback, and another 10 feet to the first residential unit?
You're correct.
Okay.
You're correct. The graphic on page 24 represents our old parking deck location in blue.
Thank you.
Would you compare your height, building height, to the ridgeline height at Cornelia Place?
Yes. If you wouldn't mind going back to that booklet graphic, page 19, or it's on the screen right here. We do have floor elevations specifically. Do you have that as air? Thank you very much. This is out of the construction drawings for the Cornelia Place building. The top of the roof is at elevation 950. Okay? That's the top of their hip roof, 950. And if you were to go to our page 25, you'll see that on the west side of our building, our cornice line is at elevation 945, five feet shorter than the top roof elevation of the Cornelia Place apartments.
All right. Thank you. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Farr or anybody else on the proponent team? All right. We're going to open this matter up for a public hearing. And if you recall, when Ms. Bennerott visited with you at the, before the meeting started, you'll have three minutes. You should use one of the side podiums unless you have an overhead you want to use, and then we'll get you a handheld microphone. Make sure you give us your name and address. And you'll have three minutes, and the yellow light will go on when you've got about 30 seconds left, so then you can start thinking about wrapping up your comments. So the matter is now open for public testimony, and we invite folks up to testify in this matter. Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm Maria Field, Heritage of Edina, 3420 Heritage Drive, Edina, Minnesota 55435. We thank you for the opportunity to speak in opposition to the proposed senior assisted project in Edina across from Fairview Southdale Hospital. As I said in a previous letter, the city of Edina already supports five facilities with over 1,000 apartments within two miles of Fairview Southdale and thousands more within a five-mile radius. In fact, we sent you all of the letters and the analysis that my rental people did, and she came up with 4,000 in the area. We know that all of the existing facilities have waiting lists, but they also have empty apartments or units. Throughout our 53-year history at Heritage of Edina, we have always had waiting lists of up to 40 families at any given time. Waiting lists are not an indicator of a lack of senior housing options. Instead, the empty apartments or units are the indicator of a saturation point of too many facilities being built, as there are several more which will be finished by fall. Edina certainly has reached that point, and so has the state overall, so it may be time to put a moratorium on building assisted living units as they did on nursing home beds in the 1970s. Several issues seem to be very important about the location and prices of the proposed facility. Affordable housing, which would allow residents relying on state funding to be able to live there. The new proposal now has 11 units. Heritage of Edina currently has around 100 living there. Most nonprofits, I understood, have to take the majority of the EW, but it seems like we're an exception because we're a private pay facility, private tax-paying facility. To show how much traffic congestion that will increase dramatically on a corner that is already too busy with many vehicles coming off of Highway 62 going to the hospital, the medical building, Southdale Shopping Center, and all the other shops on France Avenue. I know I drive through there all the time because I take people to appointments in a limousine, and so it's always very, very busy. To show how much traffic our four buildings of 257 apartments generate, we did an analysis of how many vehicles come and go every day. We split it in four categories: regular deliveries, extra healthcare staff, HOE staff, visitor to our residents and families, and looking for home for their loved one. Our regular deliveries are food six times per week, garbage pickup every day, including Sundays, because with our units, that's how much we generate with assisted living and the memory care. We have UPS deliveries every day, FedEx every day, elevator maintenance one to three times a month, metro mobility and non-emergency transport six to 10 times a day, grocery and dairy for residents three times a week, activities, volunteers, entertainment, two to 10 per week, post offices every day except Sunday, and we have a mobile truck once a week. We have some medical vendors that drop off evenings and nights, and police and ambulance need to come every day. So, anyway, I have other people that will explain the other categories.
Thank you, Ms. Field.
Hi, my name's Kate Zones. I am the Director of Nursing at Heritage of Edina. My address is 8648 139th Street, Savage, Minnesota. I wrote this letter also to the City Planning Commission and was present there a couple of weeks ago. I just wanted to make a statement about our facility, Heritage of Edina. We have been there for over 52 years and can house over 256 residents. When I first started working at Heritage of Edina, we had many independent residents renting apartments there, and our census was consistently between 86% and 98%. Everything changed about two years ago. Our census went below 70%, and the number of independent residents plummeted. We currently only have four independent residents in all four of our buildings. That's it. That's, of course, we looked into that, you know, why are there only four independent residents when there used to be so many? And the reason for that is that they can't afford living in an assisted living facility without extra funding. Elderly waiver facility without extra funding, elderly waiver, or group residential housing monies. We now have around a hundred residents receiving EW or GRH funding, and our census is slowly climbing. We now have, once again, about a hundred residents on EW and GRH, and our census is approximately eighty-five percent. As was stating at the Planning Commission meeting, it is less revenue because of the rental dollar, but still, if our census remains high, we can still make a profit, a lesser profit, but profit enough that we can continue to stay open. If this is the type of housing that is needed, and that's what would help the community most, then that's what Heritage of Edina wants to offer. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Sones.
Good evening. My name is Ron Kalik. I live in Unit nine oh one, the Pointe of France. And I'm here not opposed to the change-of-use proposal for senior housing. As a senior who's probably going to need it before too long, I like to have a lot of choices. And therefore, I think it's not a bad idea. But what I am very concerned about is the density. The density of the situation for three principal reasons. First, exacerbating a traffic congestion in a, in a very critical medical corridor to the hospital. Second, maintaining consistency in evaluating projects of similar types here in Edina, and I'll get to that. And then the precedent for future projects in Edina. First of all, the Fairview Southdale Hospital is adding a large emergency expansion that has been approved and is moving forward to accommodate a growing number of emergency situations for the aging population. I believe they take currently about ten thousand a year. And if you walk the area in roughly the size of a major city block, you'll find twenty traffic lights with this, this new building is a nexus, and more than twenty intersections, crosswalks, driveways, et cetera. That's why it's a little hard for me to understand or get my head around the idea that, that there will be minimal traffic impact, adding a hundred residents, probably two to three hundred visitors, and then all the service facilities that have been mentioned in a typical operation like this. So it's just hard for me to understand. And then I am given to understand, talking about consistency, that a similar project in Edina that was approved and built, I believe it was York Gardens, was approved on the basis of comparison with other facilities in Edina only. Whereas the current proposal, I really didn't see any comparison with anything in Edina. It's comparing Minneapolis, it's comparing Bloomington, Minnetonka. So the question, I think, that, that begs, are, are we looking at transforming Edina into, in a density situation, into an urban area similar to Minneapolis? Or are we going to maintain the character of Edina that has gained national reputation for the quality of life that we talked about earlier tonight? So I think that consistency begs, and probably deserves an answer. And then finally, should the project be approved at this level that doubles this density, that's beyond twice of normal standards in the past, what's going to be the response to the next development when the physician's building across the corner is torn down, and a proposal is made to at least double the density? Is, this, it seems to me that the power of persuasion of precedent is extremely important, not only as a legal principle, but as a practical matter. So I think that has to be taken into account. And if it's the right decision, it's the right decision. But I think that it, it's, it's, has the potential of opening the gateway for a change in the character of the, of the community. So I just want to recap again that my concerns are the inevitable heightened traffic congestion created in this medical corridor, and the consistency that I believe should be applied even-handedly across all situations, because other people have observed and agreed with, and I think they're going to hear from the public tonight.
Mr. Kalik, I need to have you, I need to have you stop. Let you drift over a little bit, and I want to make sure everybody has equal time, so.
Okay.
I think we understand your three concerns.
And then the precedent.
Yep. Thank you.
I didn't watch that.
We'll, we'll get some questions answered here.
Good, good evening, Mayor, City Council members. I'm Marilyn Kemi, sixty-five, sixty-six, France Avenue South, Unit twelve oh six. I'm a resident of Pointe of France and currently President of the Pointe of France Association Board of Directors. I feel like I'm in the movie Groundhog Day. And we even have a big hole next to our building now. So we've been here many times, but seriously, I want to thank you all for the process of listening and reading and reviewing all the comments by owners of Pointe of France and Cornelia Place Apartments and the Planning Commission. And I want to thank Steve Michaels and Mount Development and Aurora Investments for their continual willingness to listen and incorporate so many suggestions into their plans. And I want to thank Ebenezer for offering their dining room and their retail services to their neighbors on the block. So this is the public space. Pointe of France owners prefer a senior residence to a medical office building. Owners commented on several issues at the Planning Commission meeting on July tenth: the truck noise, the chiller noise, distance between buildings, height and density. And you've heard all of that. Adjustments have been made in the presentation you have heard tonight. The density issue is one issue Mount Development and Aurora Investments and the City Council will have to resolve. You'll hear a lot of comments about that. I want to see an economically viable project that meets the city goals also. I want to just make a comment about parking, because people are asking about parking. My, I, I have a mother who lives at Edina Park Plaza, which is attached to Edinburgh, and that's the building with a hundred-and-ninety-five units. It's very similar in density. It has a far ratio of two-point-one, two-point-eight. It's the densest building currently in Edina. The parking ramp is for seniors underneath. I actually walked the ramp last week to see how many spots are open. It's about seventy-five percent unoccupied. People who are, live in senior housing, really, most of them don't drive anymore. I noticed in looking at your material, the code requires half a unit, half a parking place for memory care and nursing homes, which means forty units for, forty parking places for the eighty units in the building. Well, people in memory care and nursing homes don't drive, so I presume the code means it would be family members visiting or staff who need to care for those people. I think the senior residence with the sidewalks, the greenery, and the coffee shop on the corner is a good step in converting this car-bound area of France into more of the village, Southdale Village, that Mayor Hovland has suggested and in the, the magazine about town. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Kemi. Thank you.
My name is Mark Waterston. I live at the Pointe of France, Unit twelve oh three. And I do overlook this site, and I do have a good view of France Avenue and the hospital. And I was a hundred percent supportive of the hospital increasing the size of their emergency room. I do feel that's a community thing that they need to do. Earlier this evening, the first presentation was what a wonderful community Edina was, and they came up with all these statistics and numbers and how we became a wonderful community. Not once in his presentation, when he mentioned how we became such a wonderful community in Edina, did he mention that we adopted Minnetonka, Minneapolis, St. Louis Park standards for anything, you know? And I just think that to look at some of these dense buildings that they compare it to is, you know, comparing apples and oranges. It just doesn't quite fit. I think the Planning Commission got it right. They voted five to four not to build this building. This company came, and what they did is, they came and they did their due diligence, and they said, we're going to take it. We want to build a building here. We'll want to build a medical office building that complements the hospital. So they went on out and bought options, bought property to build a medical office building to complement the hospital. All of a sudden, when they start doing their due diligence, they find out, oh, we can't build a medical office building because it doesn't work financially, and it doesn't work. Now they want the city of Edina, they want the residents of Cornelia Place, the residents of the Pointe of France, to roll over so they can put this big monstrous building up there and decimate the value of some of these people's homes. I just think it's wrong, the direction they're going in. I did a rehab project in Edina, and I have to tell you, with every contractor I dealt with, he told me how hard it was to deal with the city of Edina. I don't feel high standards, what I had to do in my building, and it cost me tens of thousands of dollars because of Edina's standards. I don't feel that was bad at all, because I did everything right, everything's good. I practically have a new building now because I don't have a problem with high standards. But I think the people here on the council have an opportunity. When they think later in life and they're driving down the street with their kids or somebody, and they point to the Pointe of France and this big building, they say, see that building there? I voted to cut off the view of all of these people next door, and that will be your legacy. What, what did you do for Edina? I think this beep, beep, beep that the man from Cornelia Place told the Planning Commission, and all the noise of those trucks is just deafening. Mr. Kalik lives on the ninth floor, and the garbage trucks for the old building used to wake him up. It's just too much, too much noise. And as I look out over France Avenue and look over the Point, look over Fairview Southdale, the weirdest thing I've ever seen is an ambulance going north away from the hospital, going, no, going south away from the hospital. Here's an ambulance stuck in traffic. People don't know what to do. He's in the middle of the block, his lights are going. He wants to get someplace, and he can't go anywhere. I challenge anybody to go there during Christmas time and try to get through those traffic lights in a reasonable order. If there's a woman in there going to have a baby, by the time they got through the traffic lights, the kid could be a toddler. I mean, it just takes forever.
(laughter)
I mean, it's, it's ridiculous.
Mr. Waterston, I need to have you, need to have you wrap up.
Got to wrap up? Okay, but I just feel.
You got the red light.
The building is too high, and I think it should be turned down, and he'll come back with another project. Don't worry. We're not done with this yet. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Waterston.
Side one.
Yeah, I'd go there if I were you. That'd be a little easier. Pull it down a little bit more for yourself.
Distinguished Mr. Mayor and Council members, good evening. My name is Dahlia Katz, and I am a homeowner at Pointe of France and a widow. I live in condominium number five-zero-three in the northeast corner of our building facing both France Avenue and the proposed facility. I have continued working past my retirement age until last month, when my job was outsourced to the, the current economic environment. We, the prof, the property owners of Pointe of France are not rich. We're middle-class people who are trying to preserve the value of our property. We are homeowners who do not look at condominiums by the number of beds that we can accommodate in our homes. We live in homes. It is extremely important for us to preserve the value of our investment, which should not be impacted by the project we are discussing tonight. We need to preserve the safe value. I want to reiterate, we are a group of citizens who are trying to live independently in a nice building of our choice, pay taxes, and protect our interests. And yes, we have earned the right to do so. I am concerned by the disruption to our lives during the construction process. This building, under consideration, is too massive, too close to our property and to the sidewalk, too close to France Avenue where the speed limit is almost freeway speed. Contrary to estimates by the proposed, proponent parties, it will increase traffic tenfold around our block by the number of additional vehicles needed to serve the needs of the residents, visitors and staff, plus the truck traffic it would originate. There is miniscule space allocated for lawn and shrubbery to match the current aesthetics of our block. The surface parking spaces are insufficient for a facility of this magnitude. They would be charged for the underground parking, and we fear that our parking lot will be accessed by drivers sitting free parking. We will need to place guards at our cost to monitor search activity. I am not looking forward to the noise of a chiller in front of my bedroom day and night. And neither the sight of it when I go to the balcony to enjoy a breath of fresh air. Also, I must point out that approximately nine months of the year, the trees have no leaves. They're bare. I would leave the rest of the, oh, this project will disrupt the peaceful enjoyment of our property. I would leave the rest of the objection to my neighbors who are more versed on issues of density per area of land, zoning, et cetera. I thank you again for allowing me to speak tonight.
Yes, thanks, Mrs. Katz. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. My name is Ralph Lederman. I live at Unit four oh two at Pointe of France. I'd like to say I'm not against this project. However, I'm only against the size and the mass of this building. I think the gender or the tender of what they're proposing is acceptable. However, I think it should be compared to other units or other similar units in our neighborhoods. Excuse me. The floor area ratio sets an unprecedented landmark that I think you're going to have trouble facing in the future by going over to, for floor area ratio. In, in favor of density, if you look at examples of similar projects in Edina where we have senior housing, the highest is forty at present. They range between twenty and forty, and I think going to the proposed eighty-two is far in excess. The two adjacent properties, Pointe of France has only seventeen units per acre, and Cornelia Place has thirty-one. Second issue I have is with the site access. The present location that they are proposing for their service and parking access driveways is to be located adjacent to the driveway to Cornelia Place and almost directly across the street from the access to the parking ramp for Southdale. Additionally, a few feet to the west is the access drive for Twin City Orthopedics. This puts four driveways within a very short distance on a very heavily trafficked street where you're going to have a lot of left turns from both lanes, both directions. I think I, I view that area from where I have breakfast in the morning, and I know an ambulance will never get through that area if there's going to be a traffic area jam up. Also, I'm very concerned that I do not see much landscaping on the surface for people to enjoy. Presently, both Cornelia Place and Pointe of France have large amounts of grass area, wonderful vegetation, lots of trees, and is almost an extension of Cornelia Park across the way. I think putting this large, massive building in there is going to block that view from people going down France Avenue and seeing the vista that they now have to that beautiful green park. I ask you to reconsider making the building smaller. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lederman.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, I'm Craig Als House, thirty-eight, fifty-nine, Linden Drive West, Medina. I am the developer, co-owner, and asset manager of Cornelia Place, and I speak on behalf of a hundred-and-sixty residents that we have there. As City Council members and as a developer myself, we share a responsibility. And that responsibility is whenever we have a project, we have that responsibility to be be good neighbors to those next to us and also to be good stewards of the land. And we only get one chance to make it right because once a building is built, it's there for 40 or 50 years, and we can't go back and change it. Can we change it now? Yes, we can with a little design, a little this, a little that, and it costs some money. But we only have one chance to get it right. And I use this as my proof to whether a building that I've developed meets that test of being a good steward of the land. When I sit down with coffee with a friend of mine, and he says, "Did you build that building?" And I say, "Yes." And they said, "You know, that's a great-looking building. You did a good job." Then I know that I've been a good steward. If, on the other hand, they said, "Wow, that thing is really big. That thing just doesn't fit," then, you know, maybe I made a little more money, but I really don't feel good about being a good steward. And we all share that responsibility. As residents and owners of Cornelia Place, we now look at a different project from that which was approved, which is a medical office building. We see some pluses and we see some, excuse me, some minuses. The pluses are, this building is further away from us than the parking ramp of the medical office building, probably 20 feet or so further away. I think it'll have less traffic than the medical office building will. That's a plus. We like the design, we like the use, we like the fact that this is a housing project versus a medical office building. And it's a smaller footprint, and we think that's a plus. On the minus side, for us as neighbors, we get number one minus, we get all the traffic, all the truck traffic, all the in-and-out traffic, all the move-ins, the move-outs. And we've met with the developer, and we've talked about that, and he's made some changes, and we really appreciate those changes, and a lot of them are good. But we still get all the traffic. Anybody who wants to move in and move out comes in, and yeah, there's going to be some beep, beep, beeping. And the developer says, "Well, we've been assured that the delivery trucks don't beep." Well, what if they do? Who do we complain to? He says, "We're only going to have trash delivery and pickup," excuse me, trash pickup twice a week." Well, we have trash pickup twice a week for 100 units. Heritage has it every day. I'm a little confused as to how 200 units only has trash pickup twice a week.
Mr. Als House, I need to have you wrap up.
Okay, well, thank you very much. We appreciate the fact that he's made some changes. We're concerned with the density, we're concerned with all the traffic. We'd be happy to compromise if you could move some of the traffic to another location on that site, like the south side where all the traffic was originally with the medical building. Some was on the north, some was on the south.
All right.
And if he replaces the trees, which you just cut down, with similar-type trees, 20 feet, 15 to 20 feet, I think that would help also. Thank you.
All right. Quick question for you, Mr. Als House. As a developer, asset manager, and owner of Cornelia Place, where the units are larger than what's being proposed here, you say that you like the use. What's your notion of what the density level ought to be over there?
Well, you know, density doesn't necessarily mean the number of units. It means square footage. It means FAR. I really don't care whether you have three units of 350 square feet or one unit of 1,000 square feet. What I do care about is the total size of the project. We're 1 to 1. This is 2.4. I have yet to hear a compelling argument as to why this needs to be so big. So, from a density standpoint, what is density? Is it number of units or is it square footage? I really look at square footage.
Thank you. Yeah, if you go around the middle there, somebody will bring you a handheld microphone. Just bear with the communications director there.
In Minnesota, we talk a lot about the quality of life. If we lose our view, our green space.
Need your name and address.
I'm so sorry, Mr. Mayor. Marie Kalich, 6566 France Avenue South, Point of France, unit 901. Okay. Once again, in Minnesota, we talk about the quality of life. If we lose our view, our green space, our trees, our view of downtown, which you can see in this picture, the top view. If we lose our privacy, someone seeing into our unit and vice versa, them seeing us, we seeing them, we lose our quality of life. Outside, we have a lot of concrete. We'll have tremendous amount more. I'm concerned about our property value. We specifically purchased at our level at the ninth floor on the north side for the view, knowing that the ordinances restricting the height of future development would be three to four stories. If you look at the picture, you'll see potentially what we have to face, the second view. How can people in Edina make purchases and make decisions if the ordinances are easily changed or the variances are easily granted? Changing the ordinances changes our community. Please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kalich. Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor Hovland and City Council members, my name is Susan Lederman, 6566 France, unit 402. The proposed 6,500 France housing building is way too big for the site. Point of France Condominiums is a residential housing neighborhood. There are 140 homes in our building. They just happen to be stacked on top of each other. We deserve the respect and consideration of any other Edina neighborhood. The proposed project is a negative impact for us. It blocks our air circulation. It will block our sunlight, our existing views because of its excessive land coverage and building height. It will negatively affect our quality of life. The proposed five-floor new building is asking to be 62 feet high. Therefore, the top of their building could be at approximately our seventh floor. The proposed building is too high. It would block the view looking north to downtown from Point of France Condominiums that have had that view for 35 years. About 42 condominiums have a full or partial view that will now be totally blocked or significantly changed by this potentially overbuilt project. The proposed housing project wants a floor area ratio, FAR of 2.2, instead of the 1.0 FAR allowed for the site. Will this overbuilding of the site create a precedent for more overbuilding in Edina? We're not inner-city Minneapolis. Those were the photos they showed you. Ten Point of France homeowners spoke and objected at the July 10th Planning Commission meeting. Thirty-two letters from Point of France homeowners objecting to the size of the proposed project were delivered to both the Planning Commission and yourselves. Here are the copies. You've all seen them. How many letters have you received that were in favor of the project? We are all asking for a scaled-down project that is more appropriate to its surroundings. The project should be considerate and respectful of the 240 adjacent residences. Thank you for your consideration of this letter. We hope to keep Edina what Edina has always been. Sincerely, Susan Lederman, Point of France. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lederman. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm actually here to support the skating club, but it turns out I'm a neighbor. 6326 France Avenue South.
Your name?
Tanya Ballinger.
Thank you.
And I'm in the Burke House right on the corner, right at the bridge, the exit. So, I'm very close to this location. There's an accident, I like to see the data, almost daily. I've seen so many accidents out my door, talking about traffic. There's a high volume of traffic. It's so dense. And I'm really, in listening to this, concerned that putting a facility for residents who would have memory issues or other needing high skilled nursing and other assisted living, it doesn't seem like a right fit for that neighborhood. Although being close to Twin Cities Orthopedics and Southdale is convenient if and when it may happen that one would need to go there, but to me, it seems more appropriate for a facility like that to be somewhere else. So, as a person that sees this intersection on a daily basis, I just, I want to point out that I don't think that the idea for this type of development is appropriate. I'd really recommend doing some, a different kind of study. I haven't been informed on what's been happening with this, but maybe some kind of different study to look at what are other options. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd love to close the public hearing.
Got a motion, a second to close the public hearing discussion. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. Carrie. All right, let's go back through some of the concerns that were expressed, which bring up some questions. There was a, there was one question from Mr. Kalich about whether this project would create a precedent for other development if we approved this at the level of density that's proposed. Sorin, your thoughts on that? Or Carrie?
As it relates to the PUD, it would not create a precedent. It's unique to that property, and whether it can handle the traffic, that's been proposed, and that's why you've already studied it. So, no, it wouldn't be binding on you on any future decisions.
All right. There were several folks that were concerned about traffic. Mr. Rickert, you want to come up and talk a little bit about what the traffic studies show for this kind of a use? And I think for folks to have some frame of reference, they could maybe think about what we had proposed before, or what we had approved, excuse me, before.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, yes, we did do a traffic study looking at this. We also did the traffic study for the approved, what's already approved on the site for the medical office building. When we looked at the traffic generation, we look at those AM, the morning peak hour, and the evening peak hour. Those are the two worst-case conditions of the day that we look at. So, we look at those AM and PM peak hour periods. For the original, original development, medical office, we had 279 AM trips that would be generated from that medical office building and 216 PM peak hour trips that'd be generated from that medical office. With this development, again, because of the, you know, the uses and studies that were completed all over the country, you know, these rates are based on studies that were, you know, developed all over the country. The AM peak would be only 27 trips in, or 27 total trips, and the PM peak would be 40 trips. So, it's significantly less in those PM peak hours. So, the traffic is significantly, will be significantly less with this type of a use versus the medical office building. Again, we did look at the, you know, the ins and outs at those intersections. One of the questions was on the access, you know, at that one location across from, you know, the hospital ramp and Twin City Orthopedic. We looked at the interaction of all that traffic with those left-turning vehicles. There is that center left-turn lane there that helps accommodate those left turns, you know, in and out of those sites. The traffic from a facility like this, we also looked at the daily traffic. This site, and I don't have the number for the medical office in front of me, but for this site, we'd look at about 500 trips in a day that would come in and out of this site, 250 in, 250 out, you know, in a day. So, those, you know, truck traffic, the deliveries, the, you know, those types of traffic would be included in that 250 spread out during the day, 250 in, 250 out. So, what the Ebenezer folks were indicating, you know, is pretty consistent with what we're talking about over the length of a day, you know, that many trips. Some of those trips are also going to be shared trips already on the road, you know, the mail delivery, you know, the, those types of trips are already on the road. So, we're not adding anything new with those trips. They will be turning in and out of the site, you know, although they are turning, or were turning in and out of those sites as they were today, but they will be also turning in and out of this site now. As far as the parking, again, we talked a little bit about that previously, and the parking demands based on ITE, Institute of Transportation Engineers, rates would be about 125, a need for about 125 parking stalls. City's code is about 138, and they're providing, at the time I did the study, they were providing 144. Now, I don't know if that's changed with this new scenario, but that's what they were proposing previously. They did move that access driveway, you know, from, you know, the original study that I did, you know, on, you know, next to Cornelia Place, you know, on that west side of the site, from the south building to the north building. You know, I haven't looked specifically at that, you know, I just, you know, found that out. So, I haven't looked at the queuing there. They widened that, so that's going to help, that in and out there. I don't think it'll be a problem with this kind of volume, you know, coming in and out of that, you know, that first driveway. But that's something that I could look at, you know, pass the next step if this goes forward. So, I'd look at that queue.
Member Bennett and member Sprague.
Mr. Rickert, when you did this second or third, I forget the count on the traffic studies, did you use the data from the expansion of Fairview Southdale Hospital? Was that part of your evaluation?
Yes, as part of the background traffic, I looked at the Fairview Southdale expansion. I looked at the apartments, you know, the new apartments going in at Southdale. I looked at all the development that has been approved or being considered, you know, in this area as part of that background. And I also looked at a general background growth factor on France Avenue and on 65th. So, I looked at all those growth factors on top of adding this additional traffic to it.
Member Sprague.
So, if I heard you correctly, you're saying that on 65th, there's not enough left-turn-in traffic, right-turn-out to cause a substantial conflict where those three or four driveways intersect in that section?
Exactly. That's exactly right.
Okay.
Did you compare this proposed traffic compared to what was there, that was produced by those two buildings that were torn down?
Those office buildings, they would have had a larger morning peak, you know, the morning peak for an office building tends to be a lot higher than the evening peak. So, they would have had the higher morning peak. This has a little lower morning peak, but they would have been substantially higher. They would have been closer to the medical office rate, I should say, I mean, a lot less square footage, obviously, but they would have had more of the rate of a, of that.
Member Bindel.
Mr. Als House asked a question about trees, and this is for probably Mr. Michael and Mr. Farr. The trees that have been cut down, are there plans to replace them? You'll have to show us which trees those are and what your plans are.
During the dem- Susan? Thank you. During the demolition of the 405 building here, along our west property line, there are some trees straddling the property line here that got removed that were scheduled to be salvaged. Those will be replaced with new trees, of course, as well as we're adding additional plantings. Our landscape plan exceeds code requirement. There's 30 tree, trees required by code. We'll have 44 on site, plus the 12 that we're offering the owner of Cornelia Place to be strategically located by him or- strategically located by him or his residents to assist in screening as they see fit for us, as well as the other green features that we have three dimensionally, which is our green roof, about 7,500 square feet, the memory garden, and our, and our beautiful terrace here. We think we've done an outstanding job in landscaping, not only to mention, of course, we started out the project talking with you last year about, which is the France Avenue flowers and the trees along there as well. So we believe we have an outstanding landscape plan solution.
Other questions that-
Do it. Okay. Marie Kalik mentioned that she's concerned about residents in this new facility being able to see into the windows of her Pointe de France unit. How far are they apart, building to building? Do we know that?
Approximately 145 feet.
Okay, all right, thank you.
There was also a concern expressed about the proximity of the building to the sidewalk, and I, if memory serves me right, that you've got a 10-foot wide sidewalk proposed on the France Avenue side. Is that correct? Do you want to comment on that?
That is correct. 10-foot wide public decorative color sidewalk along France Avenue, separated from the building by a planting strip, as well as the flower, the raised flower beds before you reach the curb.
But you know what the width of the sidewalk would be in front of Pointe de France?
This is an exit sidewalk, that's a six-foot sidewalk right here. On the south side. It goes partially along our building length there.
Member Bennett.
This may be a question for Attorney Matic as well. This is, I, I am a bit troubled by the discussion about trap, trash pickup, because I think we've got some information that conflicts in terms of its frequency. And I know that within a residential setting, for instance, with schools, it can be a point of real conflict in the neighborhood, and a lot of those trucks are coming out at seven in the morning. So the hours of confined, uh, delivery that are being offered or agreed to may not cover that. So can you please speak to that point? And are you, I guess this would be a question for Mr. Bernardi or Mr. Michaels, are you willing to accept further restrictions that you won't have trash deliveries? Because that's, or pickups, because that's going to have as much impact as the deliveries on that end of the building.
Want to clarify that? Can you answer? Trash pickup?
Would observe the same hours of restriction that you are willing to agree to, to all the other deliveries? Because again, we know that even in an R1 setting, we have trash pickup occurring at seven o'clock in the morning and when it's an institutional use, that can be quite intrusive.
Councilmember Bennett, yes, we would be willing to put into our developers' agreement trash pickup between nine and four. I have talked to waste management. We can get and continue to have similar to York Gardens trash pickup on Mondays and Thursdays. So we can adjust the size of the container to accommodate the refuse that the building generates. And that would also apply to bread delivery and fruit deliveries down in that area. But a majority of our deliveries will be at the front door area. That's why we created three short-term drop-off spaces that the planning commission suggested we do.
Sure. And can you refresh my memory, please? How many units is York Gardens?
Seventy-six.
Okay, so you're talking about a facility that is over twice the size, and you're only going to have trash picked up the same number of times per week?
Yes, we'll increase the size of the dumpster that the trash company will pick up. And we'll coordinate, I met with Craig Zalls House, we will coordinate ideally the same trash pickup operator, and we'll do it on the same day as Cornelia Place is currently having their trash pick up. The building doesn't generate a lot of trash. I mean, it's, it's just, it's not like a traditional apartment building. Cornelia Place is 100 units. Craig Alls House mentioned he's got 160 residents in the building. I mean, my residents are pretty quiet.
I think it's mixed because of the types of uses that you're discussing, and I think it's, it would be probably pretty unhelpful to underestimate that what will be produced, particularly if you have, for instance, somebody rehabbing after, after, as the mayor pointed out earlier, knee replacement surgery. So it would be important, I think, not to underestimate what's going to be produced. It may not be as much as regular apartment living, but there may be other kinds of waste. And also, if you're using a bigger dumpster, when you're backing a truck into a fairly narrow space, that isn't necessarily better in terms of the beep, 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 as we've heard people concerned about.
Member Brendel.
On that, if Cornelia Place, if you want to coordinate trash pickup, and you restrict trash pickup in this building to the hours of nine to five, whatever it was, and Cornelia Place has their trash picked up at 7:00 AM, it doesn't seem like a good idea to restrict this building to have to be at 9:00 AM if it could conveniently be picked up at the same time as Cornelia Place. So I wouldn't want to restrict that in order to allow what they've tried to arrange as a one-trip for the trash pickup and, and possibly cause an inconvenience for waste management.
That will put significant noise in that operation on that end of the building.
No, really, no more than it already is. It'll just lengthen the time, and it, it's already under a pergola. That area is under a pergola. A roof. Yep, it's kind of like Centennial Lakes. So the, the trucks go in, and they, they are under a roof. So I, I would hate to restrict that and, and make the problem more than it has to be.
However, would you open it as something that they could negotiate if in fact they're trying to coordinate with a neighboring building and that building is concerned about noise?
Sure. I mean, work it out among themselves, which they're obviously trying to do.
Mr. Michael, would you come back up, please? And I'm going to ask Mr. Director Teague the same question. Please explain to us, and I think this is the, this is kind of the overarching theme of all of the folks that have testified that have concerns, the, the level of density. You're at, you're in uncharted territory for Edina. Now, it may be that we're going to become more dense over time because our land is so expensive, that's the most expensive land in our entire community in that neighborhood, all the way through the Southdale District. But nonetheless, we're still in uncharted territory. So what I want to know from you is, why 84 units per acre? Why not 50 units per acre? Why can't you get by with something that takes up less space on the property, creates more green space like Pointe de France has at their location? And, and is potentially, I'm not saying you're auto-scale, but potentially in, in better scale with the neighborhood? Mindful of the fact that Pointe de France is 13 stories high, I'm not forgetting that.
123 feet.
Mr. Mayor, you've asked three questions. One is the number of units, which we cannot necessarily equate to beds. We need 200, 195 beds-
Why?
-to make the economics work between assisted living, independent living, memory care, and care suites hospice. Each of those areas work together, and we've only got about 40 units or beds in each of those five areas. We need to be able to take the resident from independent living to assisted, possibly memory care, transitional care, care suites, and/or hospice. So the number is very critical for the economics and to be able to spread the costs and the overhead of the project. As far, does that make sense? As far as the number of, of units we need? I can then address-
Yeah, well, I mean, you, you would affect, be affecting Farr too, I mean, if you, if you shrunk the building, obviously, so.
The overall building size from a floor perspective is smaller than what we anticipated or was approved with the parking ramp in the office building.
But a parking ramp doesn't create the kind of mass that this building creates. I mean, it may, it may be that I would rather look at a building than a parking ramp, but it doesn't have the same kind of mass that this building has.
Sure. The overall perspective is, I guess, in the eye of the beholder. We believe that the building that we've proposed, either cubic footage or floor area, is less than the brick and mortar that was approved over the winter. So we thought with this application, we'd be providing a better-looking, easier on the community, benefits certainly the hospital and the area with this type of facility. What we saw on our yellow and green sheets when we looked at other new dense-type buildings within the communities is our units have gotten much smaller. In anticipation of this question, I do have a graphic that I'd like to go through if I may. By way of perspective, our building is 223,000 square feet.
We need to move it over a little bit, I believe. There you go.
It's 223,000 square feet of building. I have 197 units, and if I divide that by the building area, my average unit size is 1,136 square feet. By way of perspective, if I was to go to Pointe de France off their construction drawings, their superstructure is 339,000 square feet. Divided by 140 units, their unit size is 2,400 square feet.
Member Bennett.
Very quick question, Mr. Michaels. Did not you mention earlier that you were reducing the number of units to 195?
That is our suggestion. Our original application is 197.
Sure, I was just-
Yes.
-picking up on something that you had said earlier.
We are comfortable with 195.
Um, do you have the acreage, the, the lot area of, it's an interesting comparison. Do you have the square footage of the lot for both of those projects?
Yeah, well, he's, he's two-point-
Yes, I do, but I'd like to do this one first, if I may, Councilmember Bennett.
Well, finish your, finish your thought, Mr. Michael.
Yes, if I was to take the square footage per unit in Pointe de France at 2,400 square feet and inject that into my superstructure, I would have 92 units in my building. So I'd be coming to you, council, asking for 92 units on my 2.3 acres, I'd have 40 units per acre with larger units. But that's not the business we're in. So on a prospective basis, if I'm to take the size of the Pointe de France units, which are very generous, put them into my superstructure, I'm only asking you for 40 units per acre. One Southdale place, which you approved March 19th, you approved 45 units per acre. So I am well under the density based on unit size. And that's what's hard when we take congregate care or skilled nursing and try to apply density per acre with these very small units. Does that make sense?
Well, that part of it makes sense, but we still then face the floor area ratio issue that-
I have two scenarios-
And I, you know, don't, don't get folks wrong, I think Marilyn Kemme was very articulate in saying that they prefer senior housing to medical office, but-
Sure.
You've covered a lot of the, of the territory there at that 2.34 acre site. Your, your floor area ratio is, what is it, 2-2 compared to 1.0 at Cornelia Place? 1.1?
Yes, I'd like to diagram two other buildings in Edina. However, we've seen some very good examples of good quality development, both in St. Louis Park, the edges of South Minneapolis, where buildings have stood the test of time two, three, four, five years and have done well. Here's a building that was done within the overall Edinburgh complex. It's been sold a couple of times. It's a well-established building on 1.8 acres. According to your city assessor, there's actually 200 units in the building. And if you divide the floor area of this project at 224,000 square feet by the number of units, we've got an FAR of 2.8 on this structure. So you've got one in place.
Yeah, so that's helpful.
If I could zoom out just a little bit, if I may. We went back and did the title report on Pointe de France before Stan Tobey constructed it in 1974. This particular parcel was owned by Dayton Development. They gave away the west half of this parcel to the city of Edina in November of 1973, which was one year before Pointe de France was constructed. So the western five acres of this parcel was not included as quote "buildable area" when Pointe de France was done in 1974. So just for sake of discussion, this is off the survey from Pointe de France when Korzenzky Crank did it in 1974. There's 3.1 acres of buildable land. You can see the mathematics here on the survey. So you've got 3.1 acres on 140 apartment units. 339,000 square feet of building. So you can see from here, the FAR on the real land is 2.5.
Okay. Director Teague.
If you were to exclude the easement on the west parcel that was done on behalf of Edina.
Director Teague, you mentioned in your presentation that staff, with the applicant having met the requirements of the planning commission, staff was recommending this, but we didn't really get into why, you know, with, with this level of density, the floor area ratio being greater than what's, what's presently allowed there, and the density at 82 units or 84 units per acre. Could you articulate why you think this is satisfactory from a professional planning director's standpoint?
Yes, certainly. That was staff's concern when the project was first pitched to us before application was made was, our first inclination was the density is just too much here. And even as we moved through the sketch plan review, that, that was a concern of staff. But taking, doing the study of additional development that, developments that have occurred in Minneapolis, our surrounding communities, and, and looking into more deeply the, the impacts from, on the roadways, in particular, the traffic study that was done by WSB, that this actually generates, will generate less traffic significantly, lesser amount of traffic, and that there would be adequate parking provided. And then also given the connection to the hospital with providing that, the pedestrian link, the, the skyway. It just, all of the, the public benefits of the project, pulling the building up to the street, doing the podium height that's suggested in the comprehensive plan, while it's not the true retail that we were looking for as part of the, the previous proposal, the changes that they've made to engage the public, bringing them in off the street, kind of a semi-public, if you will, I, I think it's, it's satisfied that. The affordable housing part of it, and the sustainable design, it's meeting all of the, what we're looking for in the PUD ordinance. So given all of that, the impacts, the fact that it's not taller than the, the previous building, again, the cubic dimension, the cubic feet is actually a little bit reduced in terms of the parking ramp and the medical office. Also the benefit of not having a surface parking lot or a parking ramp here, hiding all the parking underneath, I think it's, it's reached a level where this would be a benefit to the city.
Thank you for that explanation. Anyone else have a question or a comment, or does someone want to lead out the discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry. On the density issue, Mayor, when we did our comp plan, I know we, or you, I should say, I wasn't on the council at the time, provided for planned senior residential, I don't know how, how much you foresaw the congregate care model or the continuous care model, and how that would, how would, that would manifest itself in Edina and where it would manifest itself, but with a independent living scenario, your, your density ends up to be much lighter than when you get into this more, more intensive care to make the, the economics of the project work to be able to deliver the services. And York Gardens, that's, that's AL, connected to, or an offshoot of another, it's almost like a detached congregate care, because you've got the cooperative and then you've got, and they kind of move over. Here, we've got all of that on one- Here, we've got all of that on one site. And so what I'm saying is I don't think we were prepared as a city to, we didn't include that model in the comprehensive plan. And so now it's, the market has changed, we're being faced with this. This is what people want. I see that in the Quality of Life survey. They want assisted living, they want one-level senior living, they want skilled nursing care, and it's all packed together in one. So our expectations about density are going to have to change along with the market demand changing. So with that being said, I understand how this is coming forward and why the density is where it is. For me, the density, the height and the setback kind of all go together as to how one experiences the mass.
I'm not going to argue with you, but I am going to correct the historical record. It wasn't the comp plan that created Plan Senior Residential. It was back in the 80s, and it was intended as a way to get some affordable senior housing in the community. And because of that, it set some regulations. There was not only a minimum unit size, which we have for other multi-unit housing, but there was a maximum unit size. And then there was also some bonus points given for putting in some kind of amenities, but it's never really, it certainly hasn't fit in the time that I've been on the council. What's been brought forward to us as Plan Senior, because in fact, something that was intended to get us more affordable housing has been used to bring us affordable housing with the smaller units, the higher density, which is good. It just, it didn't fit with the code.
Right.
And so this is in some ways a move in the right direction, which is at least acknowledging, well, actually, a very helpful specific list of when that density is more appropriate in terms of the transit for the staff that a facility like that requires, in terms of the utilities capacity, the proximity to hospitals, which residents tend to use, maybe not in the more apartment-style living, but as you move on that continuum of care, that proximity is really desirable. So I think it's, it is a positive step. It's been something I've been asking for, for years, because it's been so frustrating to try to shoehorn things into comp plan and code that didn't fit. And we still have the code that doesn't fit, but we're, before us is a change in the comp plan. It is also...
The comp plan didn't envision that density, I'm saying, for that use either, because we didn't have that per acre.
Well, it also didn't envision housing in RMD, but I think that there, I'm not bothered by that. I think that putting housing that's largely related to medical, close to a medical facility could have the benefit, probably will have the benefit of addressing some of the congestion issues and roadway issues, and having the skyway connection makes that even more possible, particularly seeing that they're providing an enclosed skyway pathway from building to building. So I think, and I think the information that was just now presented is helpful. I will note that Edina Park Plaza is on 494. So, you know, so in our experience, where we have that density, we usually have it in height. Edina Park Plaza, Pointe de France, one thing that's different about this building is it's less height, and that goes to, I think, a point that Michael Fisher kept raising during the comp plan process, is that when you don't have height, what you get is more lot coverage.
Mm-hmm.
In this instance, it benefits from being on a pond, just as Cornelia Place and Pointe de France benefit from being on a pond. Even though that pond is in the public ownership, it serves all three places to have a more open feel around them. I guess the one, I do wish that there was more property here, because then you could have more walkable gardens, the kind of experience that I think folks at 7500 York have enjoyed along with their garden. But I can't argue with the use, and I can't argue with the need in the community. I do, however, want to ask about the affordable housing, because that's also a need that we have. I know that they, that the developer is coming forward this evening with a larger number than was brought to the planning commission, but it's not 10% of the whole, and I would like to know what my colleagues think of that.
That's what I was alluding to earlier.
Is going to temper, is requesting, setting it at 10% of the whole.
Because I don't think we're going to reach our affordable housing goals if we don't start enforcing the standards. So we said 10%. I don't see why we'd exclude the memory care units.
How about the transitional care units? It seems like those should be excluded.
Those, right. Those 18 care suites, and I'm looking at just the 111 plus the additional memory care, skilled nursing units, not the 18 care suites. And that's how we got to 18 units on the affordable.
Member Swenson.
This is probably the longest I've ever been quiet at a council meeting, so I'd like to at least recognize that. I did talk to a number of the planning commission members after their vote. What they were most concerned about wasn't density, it wasn't use, they supported both of those two things. What they were concerned about are the things that this developer has changed in general, and that's the step back to Cornelia, the more feet away from the property line. It's the covered loading dock. It's putting the chiller in the peak at the point of it. It's all those things. I'm going to support this. When I went on the planning commission 19 years ago, I was told that the Pointe de France, when it was built, everyone who wrote letters said it will ruin Edina, it will ruin Southdale. I voted on Cornelia Place. We got letters that it was way too large and way too big for the site. This is a common heard theme for us, but I agree with Member Bennett that this is the right corner for this, it's attached to the hospital, it's good use, and the corner with the rest, the coffee and the bistro will help coordinate the rest of the buildings around for an opportunity. So I'm going to make a motion, but I'm going to ask Carrie, since it's a comprehensive guide plan amendment, would you like me to make that motion first, because that takes a different vote?
Yeah, we should, yep.
So I would move the comprehensive guide plan amendment.
That's 2013-61.
Thank you.
My second.
All right. We've got a motion of second on the guide plan amendment, which requires a four-fifth vote. Good discussion incidentally. Further discussion? Do we need a roll call?
Yes.
I think we do. All right, roll call, please.
Member Brendel.
Aye.
Member Sprig.
Aye.
Member Swenson.
Aye.
Member Bennett.
Aye.
Mayor Hovland.
Aye.
Then I'm going to move the amendment to the PUD rezoning. Do you want the preliminary development plan included in that, or do you want that separate, so we can do it, that as one?
As one, right.
2013-62.
Right.
And did you want to address the affordable housing issue in that motion?
I will address the affordable housing issue, and I will request 10% of everything but the care units, transitional care units.
Second.
Discussion, Member Bennett.
Would you accept an amendment on 10 to the point that the discussion that Member Brendel and I were having with, I think it is important that trash pickup be acknowledged as having some of the same kind of impact, and so if there is desire to partner with the neighbors on that, I would, I don't know if it needs to be in this.
I think you two have made it really clear what your expectations are. I would rather not put that in this motion. I think that's confusing.
Okay.
But that's just my preference.
Fine.
Is that fine? Thank you, Member Brendel.
All right, further discussion.
Now, my question, other than that, to my second, is that this is, the ordinance, this amendment, is that going to take a second vote two weeks from now? Which is the one that needs four votes if we want to do second reading?
No, it's got to go back for final plan review at the planning commission.
Right. That you need.
The comprehensive plan required the four votes, and that's a final action.
Right. I knew that was final.
Yeah, the final rezoning and final development plan, they would make a formal application for that and come back at a later date.
Member Bennett.
Do the materials, when are the materials shown?
Oh, that's final.
Oh, the material's ready.
Yeah, at the final.
They come back for final. All right. Any other comments?
Mayor, just on the sustainability element, I talked to Commissioner Potts about, again, someone from the city being a design team member, so we can be CC'd on the chain of correspondence to make sure that that, those goals are being met. Does the applicant have any issue with that?
I think, remember, that Director Teague said that he would be the facilitator of that in the planning department, so.
That's, okay.
Member Bennett.
Oh, I just also wanted to say generally, tonight, my concerns were about the same as the planning commissions, and I'm glad to see someone step up on the sustainability guidelines and actually put something concrete, and that exceeded my expectation. I was looking for 10%, and I talked to a commissioner, and that's what we were looking at. So that's, it's great that you have your stretch goal in the plan. And also, the surprise for me was the podium and the setback on the west side, which I think will give a little more breathing room to that side and a little more mitigation of the deliveries and the ins and outs going on, as well as the segregation of the parking traffic from the truck traffic. So I think those were really important changes here in the final plan, as well as the relocation of the chiller.
Member Bennett, comment?
Just to return to trash one more time, because it is, I think it is really important. Looking at nine, it states, condition nine, states deliveries on the west side of the building shall be limited to 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Would you accept a friendly amendment that said as shall be trash pickup unless otherwise coordinated with neighboring buildings?
I would accept that.
Yeah.
Are you okay with that?
Yes.
Member Brendel, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
One question I have, and it's just a question of process. In here, it says, first reading requires offering of ordinance only, second reading, does that mean we could pass this and waive, waive second reading? No?
I was told no, so I'm confused by the...
Yeah, I'm confused why it's here, so.
The ordinance would be part of the second phase? That's when we're adopting the PUD ordinance? So there's no ordinance before you this evening?
Okay, our instructions are just confusing.
All right, it's just, I just thought it was an option for tonight, since it's here, so, okay.
Okay. Any other comments? All right. We've got a motion of second. Roll call, please.
Member Sprig.
Aye.
Member Swenson.
Aye.
Member Bennett.
Aye.
Member Brendel.
Aye.
Mayor Hovland.
Aye.
It's on 2013-62. All right. Anything further, Director Teague?
I'm sorry, Mr. ...
Anything further?
Nope.
Okay, all right. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Oh, wait a minute.
I didn't know you were asking for the hours for trash pickup. I thought you were asking something else.
This next public hearing is really quite performant.
Yeah. No, that was fine, that was fine. I thought you were, you know, I thought you were asking something else, so.
Okay, all right. Thank you. The next public hearing, Scott wants to handle it instead of John Wallen, so we can move it along.
Yeah.
Long night.
The next public hearing matter we have before us this evening, and the final one, deals with the consideration of the issuance of some general obligation capital improvement plan bonds and the modification of the capital improvement plan. I'm going to let Manager Neil introduce the topic.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll give a brief preamble to this, and then Mr. Wallen, our finance director, is here, and he can speak to some of the details and answer your questions. You know, you hear in the news a lot about federal sequestration and the impacts that that has on businesses and governments around the country. This issue, that's the subject of this public hearing tonight, is one of those impacts. The city issued some Build America bonds back in 2009 to help finance the construction of the new Public Works Building, and part of the agreement with those Build America bonds was that if the federal government ever reneged or shorted the city on its planned subsidy of those bonds, which was part of the economic stimulus at the time, that would give the city the ability to refinance those bonds, and that has happened. We expected to, we should have received a subsidy payment on these bonds from the federal government as of August 1st. We did not, so we anticipated that we would not. And that's what this public hearing tonight is about, is about our move to go forward with refinancing this Build America bond debt. So this is not taking on new debt, it's refinancing existing debt that was used to help build the Public Works Parks Maintenance Facility. If we're able to do this, we anticipate that we'll save about $200,000 of the, over the life of these bonds. And what we're doing tonight is having a public hearing to see if there's any public comment about that, and if there, and if the council gives us the go-ahead, we'll proceed with organizing a bond sale. And, Mr. Wallen, is there anything to add to that description?
Director Wallen?
That's correct. It's just one more item. These are CIP bonds, which are created 2003 by legislation. There are certain procedures that happen with these bonds. One of them is this public hearing. And with that, I can answer a question.
Okay. Questions for, any other questions for either Manager Neil or Director Wallen?
No.
All right. I'm going to open this matter up for a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and testify or inquire regarding this matter? This will involve a nice savings for us.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion of second to close the public hearing, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those say nay. Carried. Do we have a motion with regard to this matter?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion of second to adopt a modification to the five-year capital improvement plan and approve the issuance of general obligation bonds that will save us about $202,000.
Right, and resolution 2013-63.
Correct. Do we have a motion to that effect?
Yes, second.
All right. Motion of second, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those say nay. Carried. Now we are going to community comment portion of the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to come forward and address the council with regard to a matter that's not on the agenda tonight? Okay. We're going to move on to the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda, and the first issue in front of us says 8A is the priority use policy for Braemar Arena. And Director Catry has this matter. And Ms. Miller, the general manager of the Ice Arena, is here as well. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Hovland, members of the council. I have for you tonight a recommended priority use policy for Braemar Arena, and I have a few slides that I would like to share, and then Suzy Miller, Braemar Arena general manager, and I would be happy to stand to answer any questions. At the August 21st, 2012 city council meeting, it was recommended to staff to create a priority use document for Braemar Arena. At the June 11th... At the June 11th, 2013 park board meeting, the park board was asked to provide review and comment on a staff proposal. At the July 16th, 2013 city council meeting, the city council asked staff to meet with the heads of the Edina Hockey Association and the Braemar City of Lakes Figure Skating Club to attempt to reach a compromise on ice use at Braemar Arena. And city manager Scott Neal, Susie Miller, and I met with three members from each organization on July 24th, July 26th, and July 29th, and we were unable to reach a compromise. I am going to outline for you some ice allocations that we discussed and considered. The current ice allocation is approximately 2,000 primetime hours for the Edina Hockey Association and 700 hours for the Figure Skating Club. At the July, excuse me, the June 11th park board meeting, staff made a recommendation of 2,368 hours for the Edina Hockey Association and 229 for the Braemar City of Lakes Figure Skating Club. That recommendation was based strictly on participant use numbers. And those use numbers were given to us by each individual association earlier this spring. And at the July 16th city council meeting, staff made the recommendation of 2,250 hours for the Edina Hockey Association and 450 hours to include flexible scheduling for the Figure Skating Club. And we also considered allocating hours based on residency. That would allocate 2,576 hours for the Hockey Association and 124 hours for the Figure Skating Club. We also considered basing the allocation on participant numbers. That would allocate 2,458 hours to the Hockey Association and 241 primetime hours to the Figure Skating Club. At the July 26th mediation meeting, staff made a recommendation, again, to provide 2,250 hours to the Hockey Association and 450 hours to the Figure Skating Club, and then left it open to be discussed at the meeting for year two and beyond. And at the July 29th meeting, we made another recommendation, the hours you see in front of you. And at the meeting today, we have the final recommendation for you. It would provide the EHA 2,118 hours for the first year, increasing to 2,458 hours after year four. The Figure Skating Association, Figure Skating Club hours would go from 582 in year one to 241 hours in year four. The assumptions to go along with the recommendation that we have before you tonight are that the arena general manager would assist the Figure Skating Club in obtaining blocks of hours at convenient facilities, that staff has confirmed with the U.S. Figure Skating Association that the Figure Skating Club can skate at other facilities, and that there is no minimum required at Braemar Arena to maintain their status with the U.S. Figure Skating Association, but they must conduct the majority of their skating activities at Braemar Arena. That Braemar Arena will continue to support Braemar City of Lakes Figure Skating Club in securing large events, and will continue to host competitions and shows as we have in the past. And that the Braemar City of Lakes Figure Skating Club will continue to main exclusive access to the club room, coach's room, head pro office, and priority access to the ballet City council certainly has a variety of options before you this evening. One option would be to do nothing, and this would preserve the status quo for both the Edina Hockey Association and the Braemar City of Lakes Figure Skating Club. You could postpone the decision, you could adopt the staff recommendation, or certainly you could adopt an alternative policy. And with that, we stand to answer any questions.
Questions for Director Katry? Member Brindle?
I think what I'd like to do is just make sure that there's an understanding of the numbers that are shown, because we're looking at the hours for the entire hockey season of 24 weeks, 26 weeks, 27 weeks, pick one. I've heard the description of the prime season as running from September 1st to October 15th, September 1st to November 1st, September 15th to March 15th. So pick one. But the numbers shown reflect the hours in the prime season. What is important, I think, is that this is the hockey season. The numbers on the right for figure skating are the number of hours in that prime season. However, figure skating is a year-round activity. It's a year-round customer at Braemar. It's a 1,700-hour total for an annual approximately. So if you're looking at total hours, how many total hours does one organization and the other rent at Braemar? It's a very different picture. So I want to be sure people understand what they're seeing here. They're seeing the 24-week picture of hockey and the 24-week picture of figure skating. And to back up to me, and I believe to all of us, we value the priority use agreement. We have one with swimming. They're unique. They're unique because the organizations that have them have unique needs. And it basically says, all right, you know, in order that we can have order in how hours are allocated, the protocol used to allocate those hours is what makes up the priority use agreement. There is no harder job here than figuring out what that protocol is. And I appreciate all your emails. I can tell you, unless some came after I left today, I've seen them all. But I do want to reiterate that the crunch time that we are talking about, and I do kind of call it crunch time, because that's when everybody descends on Braemar for their share of hours, is that 24 weeks. So that's really where we are. So I'll set up the discussion from then.
Members break.
Good evening. Can you tell me the total number of hours the skate club receives each year over both seasons? I'm looking at annual.
1,500.
And how does that break down into prime and non-prime season?
About 700 during the prime and 800 during the non-prime.
Okay. So whatever we reached, whatever decision we reach on the prime, there's still an additional 800 that they're going to be receiving that would not be altered?
Correct.
Okay. And in terms of your research on the hardship to the skate club of relocating any decision we render that reduces their hours, tell me what you found out about other arenas that don't have competing clubs or they can book ice? And also tell me about what you know about certification implications?
For the club itself, it has to have majority of its ice at their home arena, so majority being 51%. For the Team USA...
Of annual ice?
Yes. Yes. Yep, of annual ice. The Team USA, there's an envelope, there's a statement in their envelope, but I think what's important is that we're not saying that they wouldn't be able to allocate their hours towards Team USA. So that could still, no matter what, I believe that it would not be affected.
And in terms of other arenas, this came up in some interrogatories that Member Bennett sent to you. Can you talk about the other arenas where they can purchase ice?
There is...
Sorry, Member Bennett, I'm using the legal term, questions that she sent you.
Some of which were asked on the 60th.
Right.
I'm sorry, there was a number of them that EHA currently...
I'm referring to 14. I just want to understand in the record what their other choices for facilities are. I know they have a conflict when there's a competing club there.
Right.
They have to ask the club, or actually, I think I saw on the correspondence that that's kind of the custom, that they ask the club first before they go ahead and book other hours.
Right. There's 82 arenas in the metro area. There's 21 clubs. So that's one thing. But currently, EHA purchases ice at Blake, Breck, Dakota, Minnesota Main, Mariachi, Minnehaha, Richfield, Ritter, State Fair, St. Louis Park, St. Thomas Academy, and Vandis Heights. The one I have in question is Dakota Ice Center. I think I just discovered that they do have a club, but they also, I know the Synchro team has purchased ice there in the past.
So, 7, 8, 9, 10, so 11 other options, and two of which are within our region, St. Louis Park and Richfield, just right next door. Those are options?
Hopkins.
For rebooking time?
And Hopkins.
Is Hopkins on that list?
EHA, I don't know if they have ice there. That wasn't on the list I received, but they are...
So three...
That is an option.
Adjacent regional locations where they could rebook for the prime season hours?
Correct.
And so you're looking at using a participant standard versus a residency. Tell me about that decision.
It's more about just, I mean, trying to accommodate as best we can. I think this is a challenging situation for all involved, and we are trying to figure out, putting a number to it, to some sort of a, rather, distribution, a metric, distribution metric.
Thanks.
Member Swenson?
I appreciate all the work that everyone's gone through to try to get to this, both of the clubs and our city staff in getting there. I'm supportive of your prime season priority access. I think I would ask two, probably an addition and a change, is that after the second year, that you will have completed a study of how the Braemar Figure, City of Lakes Figure Skating Club is doing in their ice procurement and how they're functioning as a club relating to how they function today, and are they successful? I know that as a city that you, and I know Scott told me earlier, that we would move ahead and help procure ice in blocks that would work for them. And I would change, the only thing I would change in the agreement, other than the ad that I have, is that the fourth year would be not reduced to 241, but it'd be reduced to 350.
Reduced to what?
350. So an addition of 59, 109 hours.
So what would be the sequence, your proposal?
582, 450, 450, 350.
And you hold it 350?
Yep. Because I want some information from our city staff at the end of the second year as to how this is going. And I would put that in a motion.
Got a motion. Is there a second?
I will second.
I would like...
All right. We got a motion, a second. We're going to go to discussion.
And mainly, you know, that both of these organizations are preeminent. They're, I mean, we're lucky to have the problem in front of us in terms of the level of service that they deliver. And I'm a supporter of sport diversity. I think I want to have choices for residents. And if the skating club had not been here for the time that they have as our customer, I don't think this would be a difficult decision, because we should be supporting the resident associations that adhere to the youth sports guidelines and that we make reach this threshold of residents participating in their programs. But that's not the situation. We do have a difficult choice because there's an existing relationship. So we're trying to find a rational basis to allocate the time equitably to the association that serves 90-plus percent of our resident as per the youth sports guidelines, but at the same time, allow our skating program to continue. And for me, as a steward of this asset, to maintain a customer that we've had for quite a long time. We want to maintain that relationship. So when I look at the 241, I don't, I want to err on the side of caution to make sure that the club can, we can help the club help themselves to find additional ice elsewhere, and it sounds like there are options. And I also understand that the EHA, the Hockey Association scheduler and our staff will give them some help in making the choices down the road to do that. And this also has a delayed implementation as well. But the 241, like I said, I want to err on the side of caution to make sure that they can continue to exist and that we can maintain our customer, an important customer for the city. So the 350 is, I guess, that compromise middle ground. And I just wanted to, we got a lot of correspondence, and I appreciate everyone coming in, but there's one email that stood out. And it said, "I have two children who use ice at Braemar." Maybe it was because it was the shortest, too, but it was to the point. "My youngest plays hockey. The oldest takes lessons in figure skating. My wish is that the council adopt a plan that's more equitable and balanced for Braemar ice times only during prime season between the skating club and the Hockey Association, primarily based on Edina resident participants, but also factoring in the historical community importance of both organizations. Both organizations are important to Edina. They both desire prime ice times. Both should share the inconvenience of skating at other arenas. Any Edina resident participants should be treated equitably."
Thank you. Member Bennett, did you have some questions or all make...
I have some questions and some comments. First of all, I think the word receives is erroneous. The Braemar City of Lakes Figure Skating Club doesn't receive time at the ice rink. They pay for it, just like the other users pay for it. Also, they're not a customer. They're a co-founder of that, of the arena. They were brought in to make the arena financially possible at a time when there was a question about the community would have one. And I think that it's really important to acknowledge that history, that just as hockey has helped to build that arena, there was a $15 skater surcharge for hockey for 20 years, figure skaters paid that, too. That's what built the East Arena. And now, they've been asked to come through again with a $20 per skater surcharge to cover locker rooms that they will never use. And once again, they came through, they've committed for the life of the bonds. I understand that both bodies, both the Hockey Association and the Figure Skating Club, the boards of those bodies passed a resolution that committed their players to pay that $20 per skater fee, and each had conditions. In the case of the Hockey Association, it was conditioned on the development of a priority use agreement, which is in front of us tonight. In the case of the figure skaters, it was that they be guaranteed their hours. And both of those agreements were accepted by the city council in approving the hornet's nest to go forward on the same basis. So in terms of what the city's obligation is at this point, I don't really know how anybody distinguishes one obligation from the other. They were both resolutions of the board, they both had a condition attached to them, and they were both accepted by the council. But I would like to put some more factual information in the record, please. Could someone put this under the camera? It's the Decision Resources Survey that we were talking about earlier this evening. And Dr. Morris chose to look at some highlights, but there's also some specific information that helps us understand our community a little better. Director Katry, if you could please point out the list of facilities, and if we can zero in on them. That shows the recreational facilities in the community. And the people who answered the survey, the 400 people, were asked, first of all, whether anyone, they or anyone in their household had used it in the past year. You'll find Braemar Arena at question 92. 68% of the people answered no. So that's a threshold, I think, that we all have to understand, is that only 32% of the people in the community use Braemar Arena in any way, whether they're figure skaters, whether they're in the Learn to Skate program, whether they're recreational skaters, whether they're hockey players. It's 32%. Thank you. I also would like to, I'll trade you. There was reference made to arena manager Miller... referred to an envelope, there are some requirements that are unique to each sport, and the participants in each sport know better what they are, all we've had to go on, on, as a council, is what information has been brought to us, thank you for the emails, I've read every one, too, and, um, also what's been brought to us by staff, and, um, if you look at the heading, these, this is the envelope that applies to the synchronized, um, skating teams qualification, which they reached in competition, to represent the U.S., which they do in Europe, it says, "Please note, any significant changes in a team," parentheses, "significant turnover of skaters, change in coach, change in training facility, et cetera, may result in modification to or the loss of the envelope assignment at any time during the season." Now, I apologize for not having definitions for those words, I thought that this afternoon, but I didn't see this document till last Wednesday night, and so, and it was in our city hall on the twenty-fourth of July, so it's possible that we could have had more definition about that, we do have better definition now on what, on, um, the requirement of a majority of time, but we don't know what that majority of skating activities is, um, and then I'll take that back, um, so, I'd also like to ask, it's my understanding that the high school, by what's proposed, um, very successful team, has priority use, absolute priority use of two of the three sheets of ice or rinks on a, during the season, until six or seven in the evening, is that correct?
Their practices are scheduled immediately after school, and so, yes, their practices do spill into six, to six thirty, six forty-five at night.
Okay, so we're not really talking about those two arenas, and once they're off, what's the high school teams, the girls' teams and the boys' teams are off the ice at six or seven, then those rinks, those two rinks, become exclusively used by the Edina Hockey Association, is that correct?
Yep, from seven to nine thirty, ten o'clock.
Okay, and then, so it's really just the East Arena that we're talking about, correct?
Correct.
Okay, um, when does the Learn to Skate program scheduled?
We're, um, scheduled on Saturdays, and then Wednesday evenings, there's, um, one hour of classes, and Thursday evenings in the fall, there's one hour of classes, and then Tuesdays during the day.
Okay, so, and that's, I'm assuming, at the East Arena?
That, oh, that varies, that could be in the south, the east, wherever.
Okay, okay, I'm just trying to get a picture of what we're actually talking about, because I think that sometimes it has seemed to be a larger resource than it is, or more resource, when really, it's really, it's really one rink, it's the East Arena.
Yep, correct, yeah.
And I think, one of the things I'd like some clarification on, I've asked people about this, is, I understand that prime time is defined as three to ten P.M., who is available to use that ice at three o'clock in the afternoon?
It's more, um, four o'clock, from like mid-October, it's, the, the days do vary, it's kind of, you know, based on the different seasons and when they start, it's more four o'clock to ten o'clock, three o'clock is the only, that's, the figure skaters use it during that time, we do a couple, um, we have a couple other minor, you know, renters that rent occasionally, but.
Sure, then, I'm, I'm questioning whether that should.
But starting at four o'clock, they do, the three o'clock hour is at a non-prime rate.
Okay, okay, um, I, um, a local neighbor hockey dad told me that they can't get a team or a coach on the ice before four thirty, that may vary with the team, that's been his experience with his children and his team?
I know there's a couple teams that purchase at another arena at three thirty, but yeah, it is, I mean, it is challenging, but at four o'clock, we've been able to rent the four o'clock hour pretty consistently during the EHA season.
Sure, and then I understand also that in terms, that starting before negotiations and continuing, I think with, the negotiations, I think, became difficult in part because it's a question of whether something that's offered is your starting point, or is what you're offering for the year, but in terms of the hundred and eighteen hours that figure skating offered to give up for the next year, for the two thousand thirteen, fourteen season, even though they've already paid their twenty-dollar per skater fee, is that correct?
That was for last season.
Okay.
Yeah, that was based on last year's numbers.
Okay, but in any event, offering to give up those times, and it's my understanding that some of those times are on Sunday afternoon, and some of those times are a big block of time on Friday evening, in addition to times that they know that they date certain with big, like, four and five-hour blocks of ice time.
Right, right, and then it was, yeah, Sunday mornings and Friday evenings.
Okay, and the, the recommendation that staff has put up, has put in front of us, I don't know if you showed a slide that showed what times that was recommended to be, I know you've shown the, um, the hours total, but the times, I think, were also important, do you have a slide that shows those?
We, we can put up the text of the policy that was in the council's chamber, there it is.
Okay, because it looks like what was proposed beginning next year was no evening time at all, uh, five A.M. to five fifty P.M., I understand that there are some communities like Bloomington where a lot of the figure skaters are home-schooled, but that's not the case, I understand, for most of the Braemar City of Lakes members?
Correct, um, it's shortening their, the club time by fifty minutes.
Sure, but no, but again, none of the team time?
Right.
Okay.
I mean, well, that's what's designated as team time, yes.
Okay, and so, and we don't have, did staff seek clarification from U.S. Figure Skating on what constituted a change in training facility?
We tried, um, I did send multiple emails and left a few voicemails, and so I have not, um, heard back from them, this is going on about a week, um, I think that that's, I know, I've heard that past practice, it hasn't been followed that way with another team that had lost their signi, a significant amount of ice, but it is, you know, it is, it is unclear, because we haven't received confirmation.
Okay, um, again, so what we're looking at beginning in two thousand fourteen is no evening hours at all, um, very limited, um, weekend hours in one-hour blocks, or I guess three-hour blocks, but going to one-hour blocks, um, following, and then again, that school time hour, except for the three to six, um, and final question, I guess, for now, is, when you say that there are eighty-two arenas in the metro area and twenty-one clubs, have you checked with the arenas that don't have clubs to find out what they actually have available?
Um, some of them we have, I mean, I have a little bit, and EHA, I believe, has done a lot of work to try to find some block scheduling for them, um, there's, there is time available at a couple of the different arenas.
But we don't know for sure, I mean, it's, it's, there are some assumptions that are built into this discussion, I think, in terms of the ability, yes, there are rinks, and yes, there are this number of clubs, so you subtract the rinks with clubs, and you got this many rinks without clubs, but it doesn't mean that they have suitable time available or suitable equipment, um, so that's an assumption.
Right, there is one rink that has confirmed that they would.
Okay.
They would love to have that consistent block of time rental.
And that would, well, I won't ask that question, um, I think there are also assumptions about the continued interest of Braemar City of Lakes in renting a facility depending on what is done with its, you know, how many hours are cut or shifted, um, how many ice hours are made unavailable to it, and so, I'd like to point out that not only is there a possibility that eight hundred summer hours could go unrented, but also that, um, a four to, a three to four or four thirty, whatever time it is that teams really can get mobilized to practice, could go unrented as well, um, albeit at that lower rate, um, what was the operating balance for the arena for the year two thousand twelve?
You mean the, you mean the net operating?
Yeah, I have this.
Do you, I'm sorry, it was, yeah, I'm, I was confused by last year's because of the cash transfer, I'm sorry, we're operating about three hundred thousand dollar cash.
So, so Councilmember Bennett, the number you're interested in is the net, the net income?
Yeah.
The net, uh, operating loss in two thousand twelve, so these are actual audited numbers, was six hundred forty-six thousand nine hundred thirty-four dollars.
Okay.
And before that, it was approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollar operating loss per year, from two thousand eight up to two thousand twelve.
Yeah, yeah, last year was, was an unusual year, uh, because it was also the year that the arena had the highest operating revenue that it's ever had, uh, it also had some unexpected, uh.
Major repair.
Major repairs, but, but that is the, the number, it's six forty-six, nine thirty-four is the operating deficit from two thousand twelve.
And this, the last thing, I guess, I would like to point out, is the difference between the general fund-supported recreational facilities in the city, the fields, the, the ball diamonds, the ice rinks, and the enterprise facilities, and I think that as a, as a council, our obligations are different with respect to an enterprise, understanding that not many of ours operate completely in the black, the Aquatics Center, the pool being one of them, most of them operating, um, with more of a loss, but that loss is not something to have as a goal, I think we should be trying to keep our losses as minimal as possible so that there's the least impact, impact, so when we have long-time partners at a facility who are really contributing to the financial well-being of that facility, I take very seriously anything that might jeopardize that relationship and that revenue, um, this is the last, from the Sports Dome study, uh, Ken Vra Consulting, February fourteenth, two thousand twelve, I know this arrived to us in an email from a park board member, "The Sports Dome, if it's built, should be available to non-resident groups in order to reduce the financial obligations of Edina participants and taxpayers, the city will have to attract non-resident organizations in order to achieve financial feasibility and to keep rental rates reasonable, in order to attract non-residents in an unstable market, Edina may have to package a number of prime peak demand time hours with less desirable times," and I would term an organization with forty-nine point two percent participants, residents, or enrolled in Edina schools a non-resident, so, thank you.
Thank you, so, two weeks ago, um, we asked staff to go to work on this issue of allocation of ice time between, uh, Edina Hockey Association and the Figure Skating Club, and, uh, it's a problem that's been created by, uh, supply and demand, just like we've always had, uh, in this community, when our town first started, uh, having an indoor rink, or started out that process with one sheet of ice, we needed three entities to make it viable, make it feasible, we had the school district, we had, um, the Hockey Association, and we had the figure skaters, and over time, we needed more ice, so we added a second sheet, over time, we needed more ice, we added a third sheet, all of that has gone primarily for hockey use, so it, it seems to me that, uh, as, as a parallel track to this issue that we're discussing here, I think we need to look at whether our demand has again exceeded our supply, and whether or not we need to be looking at adding more ice, and I would say primarily for hockey, because they could conceivably play outside, which is what we have space for, uh, while leaving figure skating inside, so, uh, what I've come to realize over the past two weeks, working with, uh, many people that have been involved on both sides of this issue, is that reasonable people can come to different conclusions and disagree about this matter, and, uh, nonetheless, here we are now, where the city council has to make a decision on what to do, so here's the way I've come to kind of analyze this, the, the, the staff, you heard them say that their recommendation rests on participation, uh, but it doesn't factor in the future of figure skating and making the allocation, here's what I mean by that, uh, all of these numbers are, um, guesses as to what you could take away from the Figure Skating Association without causing their demise, because what we're trying to figure out here is how to get the Edina Hockey Association a little more ice that they unquestionably need, but not reach the tipping point with respect to figure skating, and, and tip them over to the point where they'd have to either leave Braemar Ice Arena, uh, or it caused a demise of the club, and I know a lot of folks on the figure skating side worry about the demise of the club, I'm not sure that would happen, but I can see where the, where the fear is there based on the significant proposed reduction in hours, so, wh, what I think we need to do is we need to go really slowly and carefully here, we know from the Figure Skating Association that they looked at their efficiencies, and they can go find a hundred and eighteen hours of ice somewhere else, I had, uh, the, um, I think the distinct pleasure of, of meeting with Hockey Association people, three of them this morning, uh, one of them last week, uh, figure skaters, I've met with them twice, um, and, and so, when I try to figure out in my own mind where this balance point is, I don't know the answer to it, I don't know how we can sit here tonight and say, "We're gonna take two hundred and fifty hours away from the figure skaters in year two, and, oh, we think they can make it by getting ice somewhere else," I, I think that's a presumption that we can't afford to make as a community, because we've got two, I would call them world-class organizations here, we've got the best, uh, one of the best youth hockey associations in the United States, if not the best, we've got a figure skating club, uh, that is not only renowned locally, but nationally and globally, people all over the world know this, this figure skating club, so what are we gonna do to make sure that we protect these assets as best we can, in my mind, we go slow, Member Swenson has suggested that after two years, we look to see how this is affecting figure skating, well, I think that's, the horse is out of the barn by then, so here's my suggestion, um, we ask the figure skaters to take a little bit more on the first year than they've proposed taking, a hundred and eighteen hours, uh, I've had conversations today, uh, I had the nub of an idea this morning from talking to the hockey folks, that, and I'll tell you flatly, it didn't materialize in anything like I'd hoped it would after working on it all day long, so, uh, I think we could get a hundred and thirty-eight hours from the figure skaters, uh, and we could ask the Edina Hockey Association to help with another twenty-one hours to get to a hundred and fifty-nine hours, uh, in year one, and then we could, uh, the figure skaters have already proposed they could live without a hundred and fifty-nine hours in year two, so we know that the figure skaters can, can do this and not jeopardize their relationship with Braemar, uh, and find ice elsewhere, and, and the hockey folks are willing to help them, everybody says the same thing, no one wants to see the demise of the Edina figure skating operation, and so, if you, if everybody has that common goal, how are we ever gonna figure out what that tipping point is unless we go carefully here, so, my notion is that we, we ask the figure skaters to release a hundred and fifty-nine hours in year one, or a hundred and thirty-eight, plus, I know the Hockey Association would help find another twenty-one, in year two, we do a hundred and fifty-nine hours, in the meantime, what we do is we form a little task force to take the time to study this issue, we got somebody from the Hockey Association, somebody from the Figure Skating Association, staff-supported, somebody from the park board, we put those people to work trying to figure out what that tipping point is, because we're also gonna have, after one season, a feel of how the figure skaters can, can do this, you know, how, how does it work to go get, uh, blocks of ice over at, uh, Richfield, for example, or down at, uh, in Prior Lake, uh, or over at, uh, Brecker Blake, you know, we're gonna be able to feel our way on this thing, if we, if we cut a hundred and eighteen the first year, and then leap all the way to two hundred and fifty hours, and then three hundred and fifty hours, I, I think that is very, very dangerous territory, we don't want to see, I don't want to see, nobody up here wants to see, nobody in our town wants to see the, the figure skaters adversely impacted, so, the, the way I see it, we should form this little task force, uh, we should have the figure skaters give up a hundred and fifty-nine hours in, uh, two thousand thirteen, fourteen primetime season, that's September sixteenth through March fifteenth, they do that two years in a row, and then we form this little task force that comes with a recommendation to the park board, by early spring two thousand fifteen, and by, by May or so of two thousand fifteen, it comes to the council, uh, and the council, uh, can decide whether it wants to adopt that recommendation or not, staff, staff will do whatever we want them to do, and you could tell from the various options that they were presenting tonight, they just want a decision made, uh, they've made a recommendation based on, uh, pushing as many Edina residents into the arena as possible, but I think they would be the first to admit that they didn't factor in what might happen to figure skating, uh, if we adopt the recommendation that they have, so I think some folks would think it's the middle ground to go to this two fifty, two fifty, or two fifty, three fifty, I think it's too dangerous, uh, ground to go to, I think we just need to go slow, we need to do what the figure skaters think they can give up, uh, these next two years, and then in the meantime, in the interim, we need to figure out what we can do, and then, at the same time, we'll be running this parallel track, we're gonna know in August, uh, we're gonna see a pro forma for an outdoor rink with artificial ice in August, and that gives us a chance to run that track at the same time we're looking at and doing this analysis, so, those are my thoughts on it, Member Brendel, you go ahead and give us your thoughts, so I'm, I'm opposed to this motion as stated.
Well, the motion as stated is, is severe, um, and I, I couldn't live with the two hundred and forty-one year, uh, hours in year four, and I don't think I can live with the three hundred and fifty hours in year four, um.
Do you have a, do you have a compromise, Mary, for year four?
Well, I don't want to go out to year four, because... Well, I don't want to go out to year four, because if we are going to evaluate it two years, then, then why go to year four?
I'm fine with that as long as there's an evaluation at year four and not a task force, because we've just had a compromised, I mean, a compacted task force of six members, three from each, our city manager, our park and rec people that help do part of this for a living. We've just put together a task force that spent ten hours in one week's period of time, and came up nowhere. I've served on task force, Mary and I were talking about this a while ago, that went absolutely nowhere and spent a whole year. The last thing I want to do is set my residents up for something like that. I think our responsibility is to, to get a report back from our very qualified people in park and rec at the end, and it can be at the, before the second year is over.
Mm-hmm.
And if you're, if that's where you want to be without a fourth year, if my second is amenable to that, I would be amenable to that.
I'm not sure I understand the concept, so go ahead.
I think what our concept is, we're at four hundred and fifty years, and there, we haven't set a fourth, a different, a different amount in a fourth year. So we're at five eighty-two, four fifty, four fifty.
My argument, my argument is that all of that's arbitrary.
Right.
You don't know what the effect is going to be.
That's really what I'm saying. And I, I'd hate to, to get to that point, and, and it doesn't work for anybody. The unintended consequence, those of you who've talked to me, that's the word, that's been in my words. The unintended consequence of this is something we cannot possibly anticipate until it's put into practice, and then we realize we've done something to the detriment of one or both organizations. It's the last thing, that's the last thing any of us wants. Certainly the last thing I want. It's, it's the last thing that staff wants. So, here we are playing with numbers, and what works, what doesn't work, and that's left to five of us to figure out and vote on tonight. And that, that's not a, this is not fun. This is not a good place for us to be. You know your organization better than we do, and yet, we have to make a decision. So, I feel like if we're going to study and look for an evaluation by a task force, I would recommend that that task force be staff. They're closest to it, they monitor it, they understand it, and give a recommendation as to where the balancing point is. If it can't be staff, if it's not a good idea, tell me. I, I'm willing to, to listen to it. But I'd hate to anticipate what it's going to be in year four, because it's not going to be that in year four. It's just not. Not if we reevaluate and start studying this as it goes into effect. At year two, we're going to learn something about what has taken place in the first year of, of the agreement, in the second year of the agreement, and adjustments will take place. So what's there in year four means nothing to me.
So, what, what would you be comfortable with? I think that's what Ann is asking.
All right. I'm comfortable with five forty-one, five forty-one, and reevaluate after two years, and during the two years, and get that evaluation in, in twenty fifteen.
Well, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with a task force, and I will not support a task force. I've been on one. It's a recipe for disaster for our citizens. I'm not putting them through that. I've seen what's happened with very qualified people on ten hours over three days, and they didn't go anywhere. So, I'm not supporting a task force.
Do you support discussion by the park board? They, they have in the past.
Discussion by the park board.
Well, they haven't.
Define what you're saying.
Okay. One of the things that happened this year was the park board had this presented to it, but it didn't have context. It didn't have financials. I think it was, it's been, it's been a tough issue, and I think people have worked really hard on it, but I think there also, when I read the minutes, there wasn't a lot of comment on it because, and the comment that I saw was, there was, there were some questions that there weren't answers for. So, to both Mayor, Member Brindle's point, and the mayor's point, I think you can't know. I do think that there is a, an expressed concern not to cause the demise of something either as an organization altogether or leaving the community. And I think there, again, there, I think there have been some assumptions made about what that point is, and I think the only way we can know how things will work is as they work. So there has been an offer of good hours. Again, my hockey dad in conversation said, Sunday, Sunday time sounded really good. Friday night time sounded good to him. I know it hasn't sounded good to some other people. But, it's, they're blocks of time, in, when there are the other arenas as well. I mean, this is, this is one, one of three. And so, time given up in this year, see how that works both for, I know that we saw the results of some end of the season hockey.
You have stated how I feel.
Yeah, I know how you feel, and I, I, I don't agree with you in terms of marching forward with the time schedule and reducing hours. And I do think that the real risk is that although people say it's not their intention, that would be the result.
I understand that. However, talking to me right now isn't going to make me change my mind on this point. You're welcome to keep talking, but what you have to say isn't going to change my mind.
Yep.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all.
Falling into the reasonable, reasonable people.
I, I, I really feel like we're, we're undervaluing the hardship that the EHA people go through. And that's on the record as well, in terms of the traveling and the inconvenience. And I think my premise is some of that inconvenience needs to be shared. I think that's equitable. In terms of, of where we go from here, I'm not in favor of dragging this out any further for the community. We went through this on the Aquatic Center. We saw how it affected the relationships both on the parent and, and the youth level. And dragging this out without resolving a controversy, I think there's enough facts on the table. This is just my own opinion. There's enough facts on the table. You don't know everything for sure in any decision, but we have a pretty good fact base to say. The skating club can take some responsibility if their hours are reallocated to some level, and get those hours somewhere else, or non-prime hours at Braemar. I feel comfortable with that factual premise based on the record in front of me. What I'm not willing to do is to make everyone go through this exercise again. So, back to the original motion, oh, and the other thing is, the twenty dollars per person, I, you said that we approved that in our resolution. That was not in the resolution that was approved, and it was never approved by the council. At the time that we took the action on the hornet's nest, I, I was sitting right here, I was the one who was having conversation, and you were having the same conversation about the terms that were attached to the twenty dollar per person agreement for the skating club. They wanted exclusive access to the rooms and the adjacent areas. We were trying to define that better. There were other terms and conditions, and we said to John Keprios, go negotiate. He said, I just got the memorandum the day before. Nothing was approved by the council. I don't find us bound by that resolution, I guess is what I'm saying. And to furthermore on that point, our city attorney had the same opinion, and that is in the public record about that. So let's just clarify that point. Now, back to the motion.
Well, actually, he said when they paid the twenty dollars, when the city accepted the twenty dollars, they had a controversy.
That was a backup. He said, if, assuming arguendo and so on, if we, if there was an agreement, we had a cancellation right anyway. But if you read the memo that I'm sure you got, it said there was no agreement. That's clear, and that's in the record, and that's from our attorney representing the city. So back to the agreement, I could, myself, I think it's imperative that we resolve something. There's enough facts on the record. Our staff is waiting for some direction. I would go five eighty-two the first year as proposed, and year two and beyond, I would stay at four fifty. If you want to study the issue and get a further reduction, if there is cause, then we can go that route. Or we may find that, hey, four fifty is, you know, that's where we have to stay. But that resolves the question today. It addresses the inequality issue that's out there, and we can't ignore that, even though we are concerned about the viability of the club, and we want them to continue. But I also think that that point has been overstated, and that, that the facts, as they have been researched by our staff, show there are alternative venues, and, and they can maintain their status with their certifications. So that's how I'm reading the facts. That's how I'm reading the pulse of the community that wants a decision to be made on this.
I, I don't disagree with you that in year one, that the universal agreement on year one is a reduction to a hundred and eighteen hours. What I was trying to figure out was a way to get the Figure Skaters to stretch just a little bit more with another forty-one hours. But where we kind of separate ways, even though we have the same basic philosophy, is on the two hundred and fifty hours in reduction on, in twenty fourteen, fifteen, and then beyond, where it gets even more severe. So you've got a thirty, thirty-six percent reduction there, and we don't know if that's the tipping point or not. We do know what would work for two years, though. We try to figure this out and see what can be done long-term. But I, I can't go there with you on the two hundred and fifty hour reduction to a total of four fifty, because I just don't know what that means. I do know what one fifty-nine and one fifty-nine means. That means to me that the Hockey Association is getting that number of hours shifted over to them. The Figure Skaters are going to go and try to find those hours somewhere else with the help of the Hockey Association. But we know they're not going to leave Braemar. And we get to take, we get to take the position that, and the continued pride in their existence in Braemar, at Braemar, in Edina. And, and to me, that's the safest way to go right now until we figure out a long-term solution.
We also are providing another sport opportunity for our residents. I think it's important not to forget that. And I know while the Aquatic Center situation was different because it was two teams competing in the same sport, there are some parallels. First of all, we set a percentage at seventy-five percent because that's what the team could meet. And when they came back to us and said, no, we can't meet seventy-five percent, we lowered it to sixty percent. We also, there were also hours available for the other organization, which while it didn't have the percentage of the Edina Swim Club, did have significant numbers. And so with a hun, about a hundred swimmers in their own letters, they were provided with, they kept, actually, their morning hours, and added some evening hours as well. So both clubs were able to be accommodated in, in a city facility. And in addition, the Swim Club was, there was a bundling that was sort of informal, where they assumed the ice, the pool hours at Edinburgh, fifty-three thousand dollars worth of pool time at Edinburgh, which was of great benefit to the city. And I equate that to what the, what the Figure Skaters have done with the off-season time, year after year after year, where they have provided us with knowledge that eight hundred summer hours are rented, whatever's going on with, with other sports. So I think, again, there are some parallels. I favor what the mayor is proposing. I think we can know what, we have some assurance that there's safety in those numbers. I do support Member Swenson's recommendation that we look, I don't think we need a task force. I'm not arguing for a task force. But I do think it should be looked at as to effect, and depending on what the impact of that shift is, and also frankly, depending on what's happening to numbers for both organizations.
I, I do, one thing I do agree with Member Sprague on, is that the, the hours that involve weekend times, Friday night, Saturday night, Sunday, late afternoon, early evening, the Figure Skaters, I would leave that to staff, just like we did with the Swim Club and the Aqua Jets, working out the precise schedule. But the Figure Skaters ought to share in some of that weekend time that they, they've avoided so far. I think it would be appropriate that not, you know, that the Hockey Association isn't the only group that has kids skating on Friday night, or Saturday night, or Sunday night. And that would be one of the things that I would, would insist.
That, that was one of the shifts that they were volunteering to make, was the shift, I think, in maybe fourteen fifteen, but from the Saturday, from the Sunday earlier afternoon to three, to eight o'clock in the evening, leaving the, the rink open. And, and Friday evening, they, what they're asking for, Your Honor, as I recall from correspondence, is that they do have coaches who travel from other parts of the country. So there are blocks of time, or consecutive evenings that are particularly important to that club. Otherwise, I think they've indicated some desire to be flexible, and.
I've got that same response from the EHA. I think they would be flexible, too. They just want to sit down and work together. Member Swenson?
Obviously, the motion I made will fail, so I'll remove the motion I have with my second all-agree.
Yes, I'd like to, yep.
Okay. And then can I make one comment? Let's still remember, they're both heritage groups for us, but we're talking about a hundred and twenty kids versus thirteen hundred kids. We are talking about a huge number of our residents that are helping us pay each year subsidy pay to keep this facility going. I think that's really important in our balance work here, too. Where I understand that you don't want the demise of the Figure Skating Club, nor do I. I think we also, in the other side of this balance, over this fear that you're creating their demise, we have a huge number of constituents, residents, who pay taxes every year, who expect us to give them some sort of parity in hours. And I think we're missing some of that here.
So with, with that being said, I'd like to try a second motion. And so I would move five eighty-two for year one, four fifty in year two and following, with a two-year review, to come back to council. And along with that motion, I would ask that staff come back to the council with conventional agreements from both the Hockey Association and the skating club, that covers the twenty dollar per participant fee.
Your second?
Second. I'll have discussion.
Discussion. Member Brindle.
Okay. One of the things that I have learned, and, and I have to say that I didn't know this before, and that is that Edina Hockey never gets primetime hours. And I, that, that knocked me over, honest to God. That knocked me over. It never occurred to me that Edina Hockey would never get primetime hours. But they don't, because the school, in, in hockey season, the school gets the primetime hours. And just in the history of how hours have been allocated, the Figure Skating Club has had primetime hours on the East Rink. It's just how it's been. So, looking at some equity in that, understanding that the Figure Skating Club has, has agreed to a concession of a hundred and eighteen hours, and if, if in fact, they can live with fewer hours, great. We'll find that out over time. But I do want, I, I do want you to know that, that, that hit me hard, when I realized that Edina Hockey Association never skates in primetime hours. So I, that, I mean, you have my ear, you have everything. No matter how many hours switch from one side of this chart to the other, hockey will continue to drive to other arenas. We could have seven sheets of ice here, and you'd still be driving to other arenas. Hockey will continue to grow. Minnesota Hockey says, if you, if you're in Edina and you want to skate hockey, you're going to go to Edina Hockey, and you're going to do that. And in talking with a gentleman the other day who's involved with Edina Hockey, he talked about, we have boys hockey, we have girls hockey, and now splitting those hours even into a third category of hockey for sled hockey. I don't know where those hours are going to come from. I don't know where the ice is going to come from. It puts a lot of pressure on the parents. It puts a lot of pressure on Braemar. And frankly, it puts a lot of pressure on the rinks around us to have that much demand. So, it, it is a problem that's not going to go away. I, I don't care how many years are in this chart. We are going to be back here. We are going to be talking about this again, because hopefully, figure skating continues to thrive and grow. But hockey will as well, because if sled hockey is added, you are adding more kids into what is already a very, very crowded program. So, whatever we decide here today, we will go forward with. I'm confident in, in the, in the interim, that we will have a way to study how well we are meeting the demands, what are the unintended consequences of this, how is this affecting our families in both organizations, how is this affecting the access to ice for both organizations? Because we've got to be nimble in this, and we have to be willing to say, whoa, we didn't think, we didn't realize that. And we've, we have to be willing to look at this again. I don't know how we could make a decision tonight for the long term without giving ourselves the advantage, giving you the confidence that we would be willing to look at this again.
Manager Neal.
Your Honor, and members of the council.
Your pen was waving around.
I didn't mean to make it wave. I just meant to get your attention. I, I think what I could offer you in terms of, of the analysis is, is this. I think making the decision about the, the volume of ice time, and asking staff to distribute the volume of ice time, primetime, prime season ice that you distribute, is, is probably the right way to handle this. And in terms of, of an analysis, I would suggest to you that, that. And in terms of an analysis, I would suggest to you that Ms. Catry and Ms. Miller and I can confer about a process and we can bring a process and a timeline about how we would evaluate this back to you at a later date. You can approve that process and timeline for us, and then we can kind of prepare to execute that, whether it's 18 or 24 months down the road. But we can, I think it's not necessary for you to have to decide that aspect of this tonight, but we can bring that back to you and you can decide that in the future.
You're saying you want clear direction this evening, if at all possible, which is not surprising to me. Because there's people sitting out here in the audience that want clear direction as well.
Can I call the question so we can just vote on the motion?
Yeah, we've got a motion to allocate hours to the Figure Skating Club, 582 in 2013-14 and 450 in 2015, no, 1415. 1314.
450 going forward.
Well, not just, this is not a two-year motion.
No.
Okay, well...
There's a two-year review in my motion, but it's not a two-year.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. I'd be opposed to it either way. No comment, please. Okay, so I'm going to vote against this motion, too, for the reasons I stated before. It's still ambiguous, we don't know what that tipping point is, what that balance point is. We're trying to figure out between how much time we can allocate to EHA, which really needs time, and I'm sensitive to that, but I'm also sensitive to the notion that we don't want to take so much time away from Figure Skating Club that they decide they just need to leave Edina. And I think that's why I'm looking for a short-term solution. We could then ask Manager Neal and the staff to come up with a proposed process for how we resolve this. I guess I'd even entertain maybe a one-year, I don't know how that works for you, you know, evaluate one season instead of a season and...
I called the question.
So you called the question, all right, good point. We got a motion on calling the question.
You need a two-thirds vote on the motion to call the question for that motion to pass.
You called, you have a vote on the motion to call the question first, and then you go back and vote on the motion.
That's correct.
All right. Got a motion to call the question, and we got a second, I imagine. Yeah, all those in favor of calling the motion?
Would you repeat the motion, please?
No, this is, we're voting on whether we're going to vote.
This is just to stop the...
This is a preliminary, so we'll...
This is to stop the dialogue.
Is anyone opposed to stopping the dialogue and voting on this motion? I mean, can't we just vote on the motion? Do you have anything else you want to add?
I think we, just from a process standpoint, we need to vote on calling the question. So all those in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the motion, say nay.
Nay.
All right. So I'll make a motion that we, I'll probably do it backwards here. We reduce the Figure Skating Club hours and pass them to the Edina Hockey Association, 159-hour reduction in 2013-14 during prime season, which is September 15th, September 16th to March 15th. 159-hour reduction in prime season, 2014-15, same month apply. And that we direct staff and Manager Neal to come up with a process by which we can evaluate the future allocation of ice time between the EHA and the Figure Skating Club for 2015-16 and beyond.
What about the $20 agreements?
I'm not going to try to build that in. So it's 159 from 700.
541.
541.
Yeah, okay. So, yeah, I've got that right here. 541 hours of ice time allocated to the Figure Skating Club in prime season, 9/16 and May, March 15, 2013-14. 541 hours allocated to the Figure Skating Club in 2014-15 prime season. That Manager Neal and staff be directed to come up with a process to recommend allocation of ice time either by the Park Board or the City Council between the EHA and the Figure Skating Club for 2015-16 and beyond. A recommendation from the Park Board? Yeah, recommendation from the Park Board and a decision by the council. To be made, let's get a date certain on this, to be made by May, the second meeting in May 2015.
For the 2015-16 season?
Yeah.
So this is 2013-14, 1314, 1515. Are you giving them 541 hours of ice plus the offseason ice without any agreement to the $20?
In this motion...
Because that's what I'm hearing right now.
In this motion, I am.
And...
I think we can address the $20 in a minute. So I just remind you that both organizations have paid the $20 participant fee for last year.
Yeah.
But...
They had all their hours last year.
Withdraw the comment. So we can address the $20 proposal in a minute and understand your concerns. So does everybody understand the motion?
Yep, yep, it's fine.
All right. All those in favor of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Carried. All right, what's the concern on the $20 fee?
There was an agreement to agree. We never had a resolution come back to council from either organization approving the stipulations with the $20. Yes, we accepted partial payment, but we'd never had an agreement ratified by the council, and we're the only ones that can do that. It's a 20-year binding agreement with certain conditions that have, the staff was negotiating. So don't you want to have a conventional agreement back before you?
For two years?
Well, even for the two years. Because to your point, your statement earlier, Member Sprague, we accepted or did not accept both agreements on the same basis at the same meeting. And no, I don't recall having discussions about the fine points of figure skating, and I have my notes still from that meeting. It's, they're back-to-back on the same sheet of paper in the packet materials that we got for that meeting, and it was part of the action at that meeting. We did not send it back to staff for renegotiation.
The resolutions were not part of the motion. You can look at the action items approved, and you can watch the videotape where you and I on record talked to Keprios and Catry about the terms of the agreement. So that's what I'm saying, you know, do you want to play it safe and get conventional agreements back, or do you want to go against our attorney's opinion and say that we have an agreement?
I'm not, I'm not speaking against redoing them in a way that's more conventional. I'm just saying they were done on the same basis. That's what I'm saying.
So you're...
So if they both, if they need to be done on a conventional basis, they both need to be done on a conventional basis.
Yes, we agree with that, right.
Thank you.
So I think you guys are saying the same thing in different ways.
Sure.
All right, so, Member Sprague, you want to put that in the form of a motion?
I move that we, that we direct staff to negotiate the final terms of the $20 per participant fees and the other conditions, and come back to the council with conventional agreements for ratification.
For both organizations?
For both organizations.
Okay. Is there a second for that?
Second.
All right, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carried. Thank you for that motion. All right. We're going to get this figured out, we're going to get it figured out together. That's what we need to do. We need to hang together as a community. So thank you for your, all your terrific participation in this over the last two weeks. It's been impressive, very impressive.
Thank you.
It's just going to end up like...
It's going to be fucking horrible. It's the stupidest thing.
Oh, God. A couple times.
Thank you.
All right. So finish their business. All right, so, Member Sprague, you want to put that in the form of a motion?
I move that we, that we direct staff to negotiate the final terms of the $20 per participant fees and the other conditions, and come back to the council with conventional agreements for ratification.
For both organizations?
For both organizations.
Okay. Is there a second for that?
Second.
All right, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carried. Thank you for that motion. All right. We're going to get this figured out, we're going to get it figured out together. That's what we need to do. We need to hang together as a community. So thank you for your, all your terrific participation in this over the last two weeks. It's been impressive, very impressive.
It's going to be great.
It's just going to end up like...
It's going to be fucking horrible. It's the stupidest thing.
Oh, God. A couple times.
Thank you.
All right. So finish their business. All right. The zoning ordinance amendment regarding the R1 and R2 zoning district requirements, and we've got members of our crack team here from the Planning Commission as we talk about this, and I'm assuming we can use you as a resource if we, if we need to. All right. Director Teague, you have this matter?
I do, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Before you, actually, you have two ordinances before you. Again, this is second reading. There's version A and version B. The first version, version A, is what was recommended by the council at first reading. And the second is based on a Planning Commission recommendation based on the statement that they've submitted and included in your packet this evening. On both ordinances, sections 1 through 4 would be effective immediately. Those deal with the site plan issues in regard to grading, drainage, maintenance, access, and retaining walls. And sections 5 and 6 on both versions, those deal with the structure setbacks, height, et cetera, in regard to the building itself. And staff is recommending that those become effective on January 1st of 2014. In conversations with staff, we felt that it would provide builders, residents who are in design, designing their home, to go ahead and finish those and even start construction this year on those projects. And then they can take this time to inform their clients or future clients of the upcoming regulations, and then we start fresh with the new ordinance in 2014. So the second alternative, or version B, again, is based on the Planning Commission's submittal, and that states that their intent on the recommendation in regard to building height and allowing a greater setback on that second story and increasing the sideyard setback, those things all work together. And in only approving part of their recommendation, it lost their intent. So the Planning Commission is recommending putting back either their original table that increased in the setback of two feet, generally up to two feet, or a provision that states that the sideyard setbacks on lots narrower than 75 feet or 74 feet be at least a total of 25% of the lot width, with the minimum being no less than the existing. And that simple statement may provide some greater simplicity or clarity than that sliding scale. Staff would agree with the Planning Commission recommendation, and that would be, that would include the 25% rule in version B before you. One item of note that I could just quickly draw your attention to, and that was a table that was included, and that was from a memo from Jennifer Janovi. It was an excellent table that shows a comparison of the sideyard setbacks using the current ordinance, the Planning Commission's original proposal, and then the 25% simplified version. So that spells out a comparison, and that's included in your packet. But with that, I can turn it over to the council for discussion.
Thank you.
Director Teague, I have a question. It looks like something was struck after council discussion.
What page are you on?
I'm on page, it's subdivision 6, building coverage setbacks and height. A, building coverage. The accessory recreational facilities, so it's on the next page. It would be 4C. Is that strikeout new, not from what, not in what came from the Planning Commission? It's the paddle tennis, either inclusion or acceptance. Exception?
How you define building coverage?
Well, a paddle tennis, if you're familiar with Excelsior Boulevard and Minnetoka Country Club, that is a paddle tennis court. You can see it from Excelsior Boulevard. It is an above-ground structure. It does not have a roof, but it has a floor and side, some kind of thing on the side. It's a winter sport, I guess, but...
It's Edina Country Club, too.
Okay, thank you. But here, we're talking about residential building, and I guess I don't know why we would accept it, exempt it from lot coverage.
Are you sure that it's not...
It's struck out. Facilities which are constructed above grades such as paddle tennis courts shall be included when computing building coverage is struck.
That's because it was added into included. Then they struck it from excluded. It can only be in one place, right? So accessory recreational facilities are counted as part of building coverage.
Okay, I see. Thank you.
Yeah, so we went up with it.
Yep, all right.
Yeah, okay, makes sense. Thank you. Mr. Potts or Ms. Forrest, with regard to the alternative sideyard setback proposals that you've given us, do you have a preference? Or does your, does your group have a preference of which one that you would recommend to the council?
I think appreciating the potential confusion of the sliding scale, the 25% is one that we think is a good...
Set forth on page 10?
Yes, straightforward way to manage it.
That is a pretty big change at a number of different points. For instance, at a 60-foot lot that currently stands at 10, and 12 would be your original Planning Commission proposed interior sideyard setback. A simplified setback of 25% gives you 15 feet. So are you, when you say a sliding scale, are we defining it as the percentage or as your proposed interior sideyard setback? I have two lines, so I want to be really sure which one we're talking about.
Sure, oh, thank you. The tables that we had under a couple of areas seem to cause some confusion with some of the feedback that we got. So seeing, relying then on the 25% seemed to be a more straightforward way to do it.
It does. I'm just pointing out that, for instance, at 60 feet, you go from a 12-foot, six on each side potentially, to 15 feet, another three feet of loss of setback.
there's nothing that keeps people, there's nothing that requires a certain width for a house. So then it's just a function of what people want to build. And depending on the lot depth, the only thing that stops the house from going farther back is the rear...
25 feet.
Is the setback. So what...
On a 200-foot-deep lot, you can build a lot of house going straight back next to your small, one-and-a-half-story bungalow of your neighbors, and that, as I said, is one of the complaints that came out in our town hall forum, was how deep the lots were.
But they already...
Build new buildings first.
My point is that they already can build that far back.
Yeah, they're just going to build farther, is my point.
Well, they won't build that much farther, and having that additional space for light and air, particularly with that sidewall now being able to go up to 30 feet, I think will make a difference. So I think the theoretical is, it's a genuine theoretical, but in practice, I don't think it's already happening. This would not change what's happening that significantly, but there would be a significant benefit from the additional side yard setback.
Let me interject here. The, I like the second, let me just put it this way, if the ridge height was reduced to 30, and we could still encourage people to do the step-in on the second floor, that would be the best of all worlds. And we wouldn't end up with a long box, which is why this is coming back to us, we haven't addressed that part. But one thing that we discussed with Member Swenson was a possible option of a choice, where you could adhere to the second-floor setback rule, take your ridge height to 30. So there's a, okay, so we get that nice product that's out there, 30 feet to the neighborhood. Or you could relax your second-floor setback, but then you have to take more of a side yard setback to get more of that buffer from the neighbor. And I talked to Commissioner Potts about that today, and we also talked about, well, then that pushes the house back. So then the question is, how much setback do you want to give to give them the light and air but not push the house too far back? And I think that's kind of what she's talking about. So maybe, so I guess I'm saying two things. One is, it might be okay to have a choice for somebody. We want to design flexibility, to say, we can do a 30-foot ridge height, second floor, we'll adhere to the second-floor setback, and then our setbacks are as they stand today. Or we can waive the second-floor setback, and we'll take the additional setback, whether that's the simplified or the planning commission's original recommendation. And to avoid, so myself, to avoid the house getting pushed too far back, I would, it seems like the original proposed side yard setback would work best in that scenario, but I would appreciate hearing your opinion on that one.
I'm guessing you talked about this.
We spoke briefly, and to, I think to back...
I don't mean Member Sprague, I mean in your group.
Yeah.
Yeah.
With, to back up, Mr. Mayor and council members, with the overall goal being this combination of three elements, to try and respond to a lot of comments we heard about the bulk of homes, to release the second-floor setback requirement would require some sort of overall side yard setback. And so Councilmember Swenson has pointed out the potential worst-case scenario with the simplified 25 percent total side yard setback rule at about the 60-yard lot width area. You're still, I guess the point I would make is you still get, with that increased side yard setback, you still get that space back on the second floor, in the case being able to build straight up. And so, true, we have not reduced the amount of buildable area overall, which, for someone who really wants to maximize that, does lead them to build a deeper house. That was a concern we heard, but not to the same degree as we heard the overall bulk issues.
You know, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I thought you were...
So the distance between homes was more salient than the length of the house?
Yes, that's a good way to summarize it, thank you.
When, you know, we talked about when we put in the rule that you had to step back the second floor, and we got a lot of cottage, gabled roofs, dormers, et cetera. And I would say that was an unintended consequence. We kind of forced a particular design. I think you'll find that the minute that you allow second floors to go up, no matter what the setback is, it's much cheaper to build a square box house. So if you are, so our unintended consequences of allowing that and doing the same setback for any kind of small yard is that now we're going to have a lot of square box houses built on small lots, because, one, they're cheaper to build, and, two, they're maximizing the space on the lot, because we, so, another point for potentially having two different side yard setbacks, depending on the design of your house, is that you encourage, you continue to encourage different styles of homes depending on what they want to achieve. And I did talk to Carrie about it, because it's a little, that's a little messy, and I would prefer not to be that messy, I'll be honest. But I do think that we need to look forward. We've already learned from doing the second-floor setback what that brought us. And they are terrible designs. Some of them are actually very nice if they're built appropriately. And we do have some builders that do a great job with that design. But I think that we have to be careful in saying, now you can go straight up two stories, but you have to step back this way, and cottage will be gone, and box will be back.
The other rule is so old that I think, I mean, I'm actually...
The other rule, which other rule?
The second-floor setback is so old. I mean, I think, I probably, did you deal with it on the planning commission, or I'm assuming it predated your service on the planning commission?
No, it was Massing, the Massing Task Force.
It was the Massing Task Force that did that.
That's when that came about.
Not in, I was told it was in the 80s.
No, it was Massing, the Massing Task Force is when that happened.
Yeah, the step-in, that was already on the books when we went through this in 2007 and '08.
Yeah, that's what I thought. It was, it's...
So the only reason I realize it's an unintended consequence is there wasn't a whole lot of rebuilds until recently, so, okay. So I understand that, okay.
And I know it because I raised the point with Gordon about how I liked the, our previous city manager, about how I liked the setback that Bloomington had in their code above 19 feet, and he looked at me and said, that's in our code. And so that was a strong learning moment for me. However, I do agree with you, I mean, you raise an interesting point, because I am a walker every day for about a five-mile loop that takes me in southwest Minneapolis, where they also have had a lot of tear-down and rebuilds. And one of the things I've noticed is that with their limitation on height and with their floor area ratio, you do, they do have, they have fewer cottages that we have, and they seem to have this kind of, you know, Craftsman style...
Square box.
Yeah.
Not that it's bad, it can be lovely.
And some are truly lovely. But you raise an interesting point.
But they don't have front-loading garages stuck in square boxes either.
No, they don't.
I mean, I really mean it, this change, if...
They allow 50 percent building coverage.
So what, do you have a proposed solution?
Well, they allow FAR. It's all measured in FAR, so it's only 50 percent if it's a one-story house. And they have things that don't count in FAR, like a detached garage, a porch that's not enclosed, if you have a gabled roof, it's only your livable area that actually counts in your FAR. Your basement only counts in FAR if it's either walkout, that's, I think, half, if it's lookout, it's a quarter. So it's a formula that was developed thoughtfully and carefully, and I think it's worked for them. But to your point, Member Swenson, I agree, it can influence design. However, one of the reasons why both the planning commission, I think everyone was advocating for this change pretty uniformly, because of not only the influence it had on design, but also because of the question of clarity and enforceability. And we had some interesting, shall we say, roof lines constructed by certain builders?
But from 50 to 60, what's hard to understand.
When you take the measurement to the midpoint away, then maybe you...
Then you take some of those interesting witches' peaks away. So we're not changing that rule. I'm just suggesting that you, that you might want to consider, you know, you keep saying that they could build Colonials and Cape Cod's. They're going to build front-loading garages that is never going to look like a Colonial, and it's never going to look like a Cape Cod. And it may be a lovely house, but it's not going to be that old design that you're thinking a two-story, straight-up design is.
Commissioner Forrest and Commissioner Potts?
Just, thank you. If I could add two other points to this, as we've dealt with this, a whole raft of issues that we're trying to wrap together to work together well. In terms of the concern about a house that extends too far back on the lot, we do, we are managing the, what somebody referred to as the cinema screen sidewall, insisting on some articulation, which we think will help. And then, all right, so that's, again, part of this bundle. And then additionally, creating some extra space between homes by increasing that side yard setback also helps deal with, not just light and air, but drainage issues as we go through the rebuilding. So these things really are, in our mind, a way to respond to all the comments we heard, and do so in a comprehensive way, in a way that also allows a lot of flexibility in design, so it's a very challenging thing.
Did you want to add?
A lot of the designs that we see are dictated by what our current code is, but we have to recognize that a lot of the designs that we see now and will see in the future are also determined by trends. And, you know, all the Craftsman styles want, you know, a current trend, and then it'll be something else again. The problem with some of the front-facing gables, and I'm intrigued by Commissioner, I mean, Member Sprague's recommendation of offering a choice, the front-loading gables are, tend to be, they loom over the street more sometimes, too, especially when you get on the very narrow lots and shower lots in some neighborhoods. So there's negatives with that as well. And I am interested to see how the builders would respond, though, too, now to speak to what Member Swenson was saying, because part of having those, when we had those big gables and had the step-back requirement, then they would compensate with greater heights so that they could get more second-story floor space, too. So now, if we're limiting it to the 30-foot height, it will be interesting to see what the designs are. Very possibly, we could get some very creative designs where you, with different level roofs and steps.
We get the cottage, even now, some of the better builders are, they're already doing 30 feet with the step-in. So how do we keep that product, but then also give some other flexibility? That's why, when, it was her idea, not mine, when she mentioned having a choice, I thought, okay, we can get the best of what we got. And if someone wants more, you know, this customer wants more floor area upstairs, a homeowner, they can give that, but then they have to give more space between the lots to account for that longer sidewall, even articulated or not, we know it's going to be longer. So, just a question of how much?
So you use the formula, if they don't want to step it back, if they do want to step it back, then what do they use?
If they want to step it back, then they have to agree to some greater side yard setback to give more, more space.
No, if they don't step it back.
Oh.
Then they have to agree to more side yard.
If they, if they take a 30-foot ridge height and they do the second-floor step-in, they can keep the existing setback. If they don't do the second-floor step-in, then they have to take a greater side yard setback.
So you leave the current code in place?
But our current is 35, not 30, so we're actually...
But just on the side yard, I mean, it was in here.
Yes. If they go to 30-foot ridge height and step in, then they get the current setback. If they go, don't take the second floor, they want more space up, they have to push it in more.
Even to build a Cape Cod that we've sometimes heard is sort of the quintessential South Hurriet Park house, you need that ability to go up on the sidewall. And so I think that, I agree with Commissioner Forrest that trends do seem to influence. I also appreciated your observation. I think what's being recommended is the most responsive, Member Swenson, you recall those meetings, too, and the mayor, and I think that it's a good package of recommendations. I've had the chance to have some conversations with people, and I think they're reducing height in conjunction with the two other things. I think there would be a simplicity, a clarity, an enforceability from a staff perspective, because I know, again, I understand if we're capping it, maybe then we don't get the creative, but it's almost not even witches' peak roofs, or witches' hats, it's like a multiple roofs. And I think people will still have choices, I think they'll still make choices, but there'll be some simplicity and clarity.
So are you saying... Any thoughts on this?
I'm saying that the package of the three recommendations combined, that people can still make choices, they can build that cottage-style house if they want, they can put the peak toward the street if they want, but now they can also turn the peak sideways. There's a farmhouse design going up right now on Grimes with the front porch that has the, and, so people, people may still build, will build, one-and-a-half stories, they'll still build gabled, they will build some Colonials. It will give, I think, more options, which I think was the intention of this body, as well as the planning commission, in making the recommendation.
Member Brindle, you favor what Member Bennett said, or do you favor the alternative test?
Well, I'm actually trying to sift through and figure out what the options are to agree with. Just looking at this table, I guess that's where, that's where I am, is whether I prefer the paragraph or the table for side yard setback. And I actually prefer the table. It just tells you exactly what you need to do. It's on page nine and 10, and in the B, in the B ordinance option. And it just tells you exactly what you need to do, and there, you don't have to calculate it as you might if you went with the paragraph. So I like the table, and what it says is, you know, based on your lot width, here's what your side yard setback needs to be, 20 feet, a total of 20 feet with no less than 10 feet on each side, for instance, for a 74-foot lot. And so that answers the question of what your side, what your side yard setback is going to be based on the width of your lot. And now, your side yard setback can be further manipulated by what the shape is of the building that's going to go on that property.
So on the current 60-foot-wide lot, the current interior side yard setback on Jennifer Janovi's chart is 10 feet, and then under the formula that you just discussed, it's 12 feet.
Well, 60 isn't even in this table. 61 is the smallest in the table on page, by then, you're on page 10.
12, 8, 61, 12, 8, yeah, so it's two feet more setback under the formula, and under the 25 percent, you've got over what's currently in place.
Right.
Almost five feet.
So, you know, I'd hate to be relying on... as well as the planning commission in making the recommendation.
Number Brindle, you favor what Member Bennett said, or do you favor the alternative test?
Well, I'm actually trying to sift through and figure out what, what the options are to agree with. Just looking at this table. I guess that's where, that's where I am, is whether I prefer the paragraph or the table for sideyard setback. And I actually prefer the table. It just tells you exactly what you need to do. It's on page nine and ten, and in the B, in the B ordinance option. And it just tells you exactly what you need to do, and there, you don't have to calculate it as you might if you went with the paragraph. So I'm, I like the table. And, and what it says is, you know, based on your lot width, here's what your sideyard setback needs to be. Twenty feet, a total of twenty feet with no less than ten feet on each side, for instance, for a seventy-four-foot lot. And so that answers the question of what your side. Mm-hmm. What your sideyard setback is going to be based on the width of your lot. And now, your sideyard setback can be further manipulated by what the shape is of the building that's going to go on that property.
So on the current sixty-foot wide lot, the current interior sideyard setback on Jennifer Janaby's chart is ten feet. And then under the formula that you just discussed, it's twelve feet.
Well, sixty isn't even in this table. Sixty-one is the smallest in the table on page, by then you're on page ten.
Twelve-eight, sixty-one.
Yeah.
Twelve-eight, yeah. So it's two feet more setback under the formula.
Right.
And under the twenty-five percent, you've got over what's currently in place.
Right.
Almost five feet.
So, you know, I'd hate to, to be relying on it, you know, the setback is what it was before. I'd rather go on something that, you know, remembering back to code that is understandable, workable, et cetera. I'd like to have something that's really concrete with this, and, and I feel this is concrete.
If you have a table, a setback, so it's concrete. I mean, all they got to do is read the table.
That's right. Exactly.
Sixty-four feet, fourteen-eight.
That's right. There you go. And split it as you will with no less than whatever it says, as your minimum on one side. So it doesn't have to be symmetric, but it does give you a minimum that you have to have at the very least on one side if it is not symmetric.
But you can have it symmetric.
But you certainly can have it symmetric. You just can't go below a minimum.
At sixty-four feet, if you wanted to build a house with a driveway.
Yeah?
Then you would have to have seven feet on one side and an eleven-foot driveway on the other side, so you'd have an eighteen-foot setback.
We don't have a minimum width on driveways. We eliminated that years ago.
Well, you can't fit it with a seven-point-eight, a seven-foot, eight-inch driveway isn't going to cut it. So, my question to you is, this is, in some ways, this with the minimum on one side, this is penalizing anyone who would consider putting a garage in the back of the house. I don't think that's what you want to do either.
Well, can the driveway approach into the setback?
How did you, how did you address this issue in your task force?
I guess I would ask Carrie for a little help here as well. I don't, I think a driveway can be in the sideyard setback.
It can. Under that sixty-four-foot wide scenario, you could have six feet, four inches on each side, under the current code. So the proposed ordinance with the table is increasing that by a foot on each side.
My question though is if you wanted to center, if you didn't, if you wanted to build a driveway, what's the minimum amount that large, an Acadia can get down from a lot line over to a house right now? But what do you need?
I would say a ten-foot driveway.
Okay. So you have a ten-foot driveway, but you have a minimum of no less than seven feet on one side? So then can I do ten-feet driveway and a four-foot, eight-inch setback on the other side?
No, it would establish that you'd have to have at least seven feet on one side.
But currently, what would you have to have?
So then I would have to have eighteen feet in setback to build my house, so I'm being penalized for wanting to put in a driveway.
You'd have to have a driveway, you'd have, if you were going to put your garage in the back, you'd have to have a house that goes over a driveway, then. That's what you're forcing to do there.
You'd have a slightly wider setback on the one side than you're required to have by code, which is the situation now. People are already required to do that. If the sideyard setback, for instance, on a fifty-foot lot is five feet, and you want to put a garage in the back, you're not going to have a five-foot driveway. So you still have to have a five-foot setback on the other side.
I know, but, but I understand that, but we're creating more setbacks, so therefore we're taking away more buildable frontage on the road. And then it still disincentivizes anyone from putting a garage in the driveway and back when they're losing sideyard setback in this new thing. And there's a minimum.
Well, I think some have raised the point of the wave of the future is front-loading garages. I've really seen both, I've seen, I've seen everything being done with both remodeling and rebuilding.
I agree.
And, and I guess, to the point is, were there issues raised? I, the planning commission has said there were. I've heard them raised. What is going to be the response to those? And will there be some changes if changes are made? Yes. But as it is right now, someone who has a narrow lot, who has a five-foot setback and wants a re-loading garage, they are having to have more space on one side of their house. And that has, that's in fact been what light and air there's been in the narrow lot neighborhoods.
And if I could just add, if you do the math then with what width, what the width of buildable area you still have, in almost any case, you can build a house with fifteen-hundred square-foot floor plates, a basement and two floors above that, and get a very sizable house. I don't, I guess my point is, I don't think we're overly restricting people's ability to, to build a home with that sort of thing.
No, I was commenting more on disincentivizing something that was asked of us, which was.
More detached garages.
More detached garages. And I know we didn't do it by limiting the number of feet of garage in front of the house, et cetera. We didn't choose to do it that way. But this is just one more step that I think is a disincentive, that's all.
Well, one of the most charming houses, in my opinion, is about Fifty-second and Kellogg. And it is one that is on a fifty-foot lot, possibly sixty, but it's got that, I don't even know what to call it. What do you call it when you drive under it? Porticashere. Porticashere. But it's got that on the south side of the house, where the garage is in the back. And, you know, and so you've got pillars. It's, it's beautiful. So you could build the house that way, where you've got, the first floor is narrow, the second floor is wider.
That house needed a variance to do that.
Yes, it, well, it probably did.
I voted on it. I can tell you. I know which house you're talking.
Well, I voted on one variance.
Yeah, I know which one you're talking about. When I served on planning and they redid that, they needed a variance to be able to do that.
That Italianate one, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. That needed a variance.
I thought you were gonna, I thought you were going to throw a compliment to Commissioner Forrest way there about one of your favorite houses.
Oh, I know.
So are you saying that you'd like to see an exception for a detached garage? To, to keep the incentive out there, rather than making them apply for a variance? And making an already difficult choice worse? No? Okay.
I think you're just, just trying to point out some of the potential infirmities in the, in the chart.
It's why I didn't vote for sideyard setback before, even though I agreed with Member Bennett and I said it publicly, that if we allow houses to go straight up on the sides and we don't change setback, we're in essence putting less space between houses. And I did agree with you. But I just find some of these sideyard setbacks just restrictive, and I'm not sure it's comfortable.
I like the compromise that you and Member Sprague have come up with, with this alternative test. I think it's a good one. I think it does encourage alternative design. So that you either, you can either step it back and maintain the current code for the setback, or.
Drop your height five feet.
You can, you know, simplify, use the formula, and.
Well, the height restriction is across the board, as I said.
Yeah, height restriction is across the board.
No argument about the height restriction.
And so the question is on the sideyard setbacks.
Right.
I think we have to be really careful with exceptions.
It's not an exception, it'd be a choice. So you can do a thirty-foot ridge height, step in your second story and keep, keep the setbacks as they exist today. Or you could build straight up, not meet the second-floor setback, and you have to meet one of the two other sideyard standards.
Either the chart test or the twenty-five percent test.
If we went that, if we went that route, then why wouldn't we just select the original proposed sideyard setbacks? So we don't run into some of the issues that you're concerned about.
You got that, Carrie?
I do. I, I'm trying to formulate in my head how I'd write that into the ordinance.
I tried to give him a heads up this morning by calling him and telling him in some brambling voicemail.
Yeah, the way I'm seeing it is it would be.
We'll put it on the work right now. He's sitting there.
You recall how we used to have the choice on the front yard setback? It was, you could do A, B, or C.
Right.
We've since, since changed that, but it could be something similar to that with the sideyard setback. You could have the choice doing either A or B. But I would want to write that up and then bring it back to you for, since we're not in a hurry on this, if we're thinking adopting the building standards at a later date. We could bring that back, bring the whole ordinance back at a upcoming meeting.
Well, would you, would you?
I think given the significance of the potential change, it would be useful to be able to have people comment on it.
Oh, absolutely. I have no interest in doing it on the phone.
And is there, is there the ability to, on the drainage issue, on the retaining wall issue, which, and the site access issue, is there a way to take a second vote on that so we can advance those for clarity? And do those apply, would those, if adopted, apply to projects that have already been permitted? Or will they only apply to projects that have not yet been permitted, when they are permitted?
That have not yet been permitted.
Okay, so for instance, with a retaining wall, a retaining wall of four feet or more or higher already is required to be permitted. It's already required to be drain tiled. It's just that if somebody isn't going to build it setback from the neighboring property, they have to get permission from the neighboring property owner to encroach on that neighbor's property in order to build the retaining wall.
So we do the ordinance revisions in two segments. The first segment that's going to, the site issue segment that gets approved and goes to work immediately, and then the second part on the, on the building elements.
Yeah, it's just the sideyard setback issue.
Right.
Would you dictate the choice in the code? I mean, I would think you'd have to dictate the choice of this or that in the code.
So you want to send it back to Carrie to draft it.
Right. Are we going to take a modification of Jennifer's table here? And, and do something with this, such as the no less than ten feet on one side?
I'm proposing the choice B is if you want to not meet the second-floor setback, then you, we take the planning commission's original proposed interior sideyard setbacks.
So you'd have to expand that table and to include that number.
Well, I thought you would just want to use the twenty-five percent.
I prefer actually the planning commission's proposed interior sideyard setbacks. But someone else may prefer something different.
What about the garage height issue?
Let's finish this thought on, let's finish this one up first. I tend to agree with Member Swenson. I think it's a little bit more cautious approach to use the, if they want to step back the second story, like Member Sprague said, they could use the current interior sideyard setback rule. Or if they want to go straight up, then they follow the planning commission's proposed interior sideyard setbacks set forth in Jennifer Janaby's chart.
But we're going to ask staff to bring that back and allow and accept, we won't have a public hearing on it, but we would accept written comment on it, as always.
Yeah, the hearing's closed, so.
Yeah.
You can take comment.
But people could comment on it if they have thoughts on it.
Is, did I, did I say that right, Member Sprague?
Other than choosing Jennifer Janaby's twenty-five percent, I think that that setback, at least for me, I'm not comfortable with.
Oh, no, I'm not with, I didn't, I said the planning commission, I was with you.
Okay, planning commission, okay.
The original proposed interior sideyard setbacks.
Correct. Not the simplified setback.
Right.
So if we were to vote on something tonight, we would be voting on section two on drainage?
Sections one through four.
One through four, and then?
I had a question for my colleagues too.
Okay.
This was raised by a builder after our first go-around. And that was with respect to the egress window wells. And then over on page seven, I thought we had decided you could have egress windows anywhere in the basement. This only allows them on one side.
Or front or back. It allows them on three sides. It just, a narrow lot, when you put them on two sides, now you're starting to interfere with drainage. You're starting to interfere with unobstructed rear yard access, and it just creates a lot of problems. Drainage, you know, being a big one on the narrow lots. So the thought was that if you allow them on one side plus front plus back, you're allowing three out of four sides of the house.
Or on either side.
I don't remember the discussion that way. I thought we had a sort of a blanket decision that they could put them on any side of the house.
No, I think it was three sides. I think Member Bennett is correct.
All right, I'm okay with that.
I think the request was clear passage on one side.
Commissioner Potts?
I think where we left it is, is egress windows anywhere around the house, so long as you also have three feet on one side, front to back.
Meaning if you've got a five-foot setback, you can't do a three-foot egress window well and have your three feet of access.
You have to build a skinnier house.
Yeah, so this language inside yard setback on one side isn't accurate.
Yeah, on one side you can encroach, on the other side you need three feet, if you want two on the side.
Right.
Okay, so yeah, that's.
So then it is accurate.
So on this, on the, in the situation where you're electing to have an egress window and you're encroaching into the sideyard setback, the point this builder was making, he said in Minneapolis, they require one of those features that we have for, you know, eliminating the movie screen wall. Typically, it's a chimney stack. So that when you put the chimney stack next to the egress window, it becomes a warning to people, not, it's a, it's a safety factor.
Well, that'd work for somebody thinking they're going to run over it.
Yeah, but for some reason, they've, they've had that experience in Minneapolis. And if you're in the encroachment, if you're in the sideyard setback, you need to have like the chimney stack right next to it, or some kind of a feature that comes out from the house. So I, you know, I don't know, that's, and I just raise it for discussion purposes, that's all. Have you seen anything like that, Carrie? Or commissioners, did you, did you discuss anything like that? See anything like that from Minneapolis? Okay. Well, maybe you can just take a look at it.
So.
And we can, we can still pass it tonight.
So five, the flip side of five talks about setbacks and heights. Are we not voting on that part, or are we voting on five through B?
Just sections one through four.
Four, okay.
Because those were the ones you were proposing to have take effect immediately, and five, even though there's, I think, consensus on it.
Perfect. I understand.
You got a motion there, Member Swenson?
Some of them.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, to adopt sections one through four on a second reading basis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed say nay. Carrie? All right, now we're on to LB seventy-one, the France edition, buyer lease development contract. And our economic development manager, Bill Nuenendorf, has this matter.
Yes, good evening, or good morning.
You are always so chipper at this hour.
I'm ready to go.
You're a true nightcap.
Let's get her going. We can see, we can see the end, the finish line is in sight.
Sleeping on the office floor.
So the agenda item in front of you at the moment is in regards to the, to the new buyer lease.
Excuse me for a second. Thank you, commissioners, for staying until this late hour.
This is in regards to the new buyer lease project that was approved on June fourth. The development contract in front of you tonight is the final step in having this project not only going through plant commission and all the various commissions, not only receiving the council approval, but actually having all the final paperwork in place so they can start building a hundred percent. If you've driven by the site in the last couple of weeks, they're moving, they're, they're moving dirt, they're, they're working on their underground utilities. But this final piece in front of you tonight is the development contract that spells out some of the core responsibilities for the developer as well as the city. And this, this type of contract is required because they're subdividing the property so they can have the grocery on one portion of it and the multifamily homes on the other portion of the property. Specifically, what makes this concept unique is the fact that the city is engaging in three public works projects that surround this property on three edges. For the last several months, Wayne Hul and myself and several other staff and members from the buyer lease team have been coordinating. The concern being that we don't want the city to construct a sidewalk on France Avenue today, only to have the developer tear it up and rebuild it in two months. So what this development proposal lays out is specific responsibilities where we can achieve the goals of buyer lease, the goals of the city, in a way where we share responsibility and share cost to some regard. Happy to answer any questions. Jim Voss from the, from the buyer lease, Lunds buyer lease development team is here this evening as well. And I'll take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Nuenendorf or Mr. Voss?
I feel like I should ask one, just because he stayed, you guys stayed until midnight.
Oh, good, Josh has one, thank you, I've been saying.
Did I hear you say, I'm sorry, did I hear you say that this was governing the EDA, the Excel Energy Design? No, okay. Because in our previous hearing, you know, we had talked about the city being a design team member, maybe that's something we could do, even though we're not on the record with that. Anyway, I guess I have no questions.
All right, we have a motion from someone?
Some of them.
Second.
Got a motion, a second to approve the contract in front of us, the development contract for the buyer lease project, LB 71, France Edition. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Kerry? Thank you, Mr. Voss, for coming.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
And, all right, resolution accepting various donations.
Your honor, your honor, we're going to act as an HRA on this same issue, maybe
10 minutes from now, but maybe longer than that. Do you need Mr. Voss to stick around for that, or is this sufficient?
It's a, what's the preference of the council? I think you can safely leave.
Yeah.
You sure? Barely after twelve, you guys go on.
It's a little early for us, I know.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks for inquiring, Manager Neil.
Thank you.
All right, we got, looks like one donation in this reporting period. We got a motion, a second, did we? Yep. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Kerry? One donation in the reporting period to the Edina Police Department Crime Fund, some, almost $700 for police motorcycle equipment. Thank you to Member Brindle and the rest of the members of that crime fund. All right, we got appointment to the Edina Transportation Commission, motion to appoint Emily Bettke to the.
Second.
All right, this is for the term expiring February 1st, 2013. Any further discussion?
She will be a great.
2014.
She will be a great addition.
Thank you, I'm glad your mind is still working. Members Sprague, finish that thought, would you please?
She will be a great addition, and I know she's waited a long time for this opportunity to serve, so I'm really excited to see what she does on the grassroots side of things with our, with the living streets and so on.
She's been working on sidewalks in the Cornelia School neighborhood for years now and doing a lot of community organizing around it, so good, good luck to her, it's nice to have her on board.
Yep.
I agree. I think we all really enjoyed her during the interviews, so we got a motion, we got a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Kerry? And now we are down to correspondence and petitions. I'm assuming we have had everything on the dais that we should have had.
Yes, we do.
And more, or under the dais. Mayor and council comments, Member Brindle.
All right. I have a couple. The Southwest Twin Cities Beyond the Yellow Ribbon, I'm excited to tell you that we have filled out the entire action plan. I think it's 50 or 60 pages, and covers the network of support in all four of the cities represented in the group. And we are, I'm expecting that that was submitted today. We're going to try and submit it by Friday, but I think we got it ready to go this weekend. Jason Gad, who is my counterpart from the City of Hopkins, has taken the charge in collecting and organizing all this stuff. And so first it goes to the people who have been supporting us and helping us in our process, and they're going to look and make sure, identify any gaps that they think we better fill before it goes to Beyond the Yellow Ribbon itself for proclamation. We have set a date for a proclamation celebration as September 28th. I don't know how mu, how anything more could go on September 28th. The calendar is filled with things on September 28th, but this will be another one, and it'll be a marvelous celebration. And once we are proclaimed, then I will look to city staff to suggest what kind of recognition that we want to put out at city hall and all the schools and all the city buildings in the city to say we are a Beyond the Yellow Ribbon city. Each of us will be proclaimed individually as individual cities inasmuch as we've done this as a group effort. So it's, it's been amazing, started last April, and it was a year ago in July that we started the action plan. And they estimated the action plan to take 18 months. So we're early. Let's see here, I have two more things. Another event for you is that the First John Philip Sousa Band, Sousa Memorial Band has its annual torchlight concert, which will take place on the evening of Sunday, August 11th. It is a concert at dusk, starts at 8:30. So there's lots, lots of, like 200 tiki torches that get, they get lit around the amphitheater at Centennial Lakes.
Would you send an email to Manager Neil and ask him to circulate her, Ms. Mangan?
Mm-hmm.
So that we can mark our calendars.
I will, I will. It's the same night.
That's worth seeing.
Yeah, it's, it's the same night as lighthouse night where the Model Boat Club does a nice demonstration, and there's lots of entertainment and lots of fun that evening. The fun starts at 6:30, concert starts at 8:30.
I like the way you show off at that concert, concert on your French horn too.
Oh, do you like that?
Yeah, I like that.
Oh, good. It's one of my, my great pleasures is to play my horn. All right, the, the last thing I have is that on July 25th, Metro Cities hosted a conversation about organized hauling. And there were four cities that were featured, and I have, I sent Clerk Mangan a note today with my notes and said, please forward these to the rest of the council. There, there's some good information, the statute is brand new. It's been updated, it's to, it's really to allow us to have an easier time to consider organized hauling, to, to draft the statute and put it together, there were haulers involved in, in helping to put that together. And the goal was to keep them in business, so it wasn't to eliminate business. And in a city, I think we now have seven haulers. They just keep signing on, so as long as we're open, we will have more and more haulers. So consider a cul-de-sac, this was one of the suggestions, consider a cul-de-sac of seven homes, and you have seven different haulers coming into that cul-de-sac, picking up trash. And they said that's, that's really one simple example of why organized hauling should be considered.
The other thing that you told me that was fairly interesting was the cost to, was it maple?
Maplewood has determined that the cost to residents is half of what it was when it was open hauling allied. And roll-offs are not affected by this. Roll-offs, it's, for roll-offs, it's still open. But this is organized hauling for single-family homes, duplexes, and up to fourplexes.
Okay.
Does not include the larger high-density buildings. That's what I got.
Yeah, thank you, Member Bennett.
Thank you. I have, I have two categories of information. One is regarding the air noise issue. Three weeks ago, now today, there were meetings at the Metropolitan Airports Commission. There was a first day meeting of the at-large cities, which Councilmember Swenson attended with me. It was interesting to meet our counterparts in other cities. St. Paul has joined the at-large cities, and West St. Paul is considering joining. And there's some discussion, there was some discussion about mentoring by cities that are already on the noise oversight committee, and I think there's also a question about whether there shouldn't be something even more formal, because there are, again, some diff, some similarities and some differences depending on the direction that a city lies from the airport. And that, that was followed by the agenda review meeting, and then that was followed by the noise oversight committee meeting. Highlights of the noise oversight committee meeting were the reelection of Jeff Hart from Delta as the industry co-chair, and Liz Petchel from, Councilmember from Nandota Heights has succeeded Vern Wilcox, Councilmember from the City of Bloomington, as the community co-chair. And they alternate their chairing of meetings. There was discussion both at the agenda meeting and at the meeting itself, an announcement that the bylaw that governs public comment at noise oversight committee meetings is henceforth going to be followed more closely, which means that people who want to speak at a noise oversight committee meeting have to be sponsored by a member of the body itself, and that sponsorship has to be seconded by another member of the body itself in order for a person to speak at the noise oversight committee meeting.
Who isn't on the body.
Who is not the person to speak, right, not on the body.
Is the goal not to have anyone speak?
I won't characterize, it's just the bylaws are.
I just find that an interesting.
It is an interesting bylaw, and the bylaws are, for instance, membership can only be changed by unanimous vote. So the bylaws are not, the bylaws are the bylaws.
Yeah.
This was followed a week later, I, I'm, yes, I mean it's.
I mean, I've never heard of that before in anything, so I find it rather odd for a public group to take that direction in taking public testimony.
Well, the stated intention at the open meeting itself was that public comment will be channeled to the public input meetings, which are held quarterly, and that was the next week, on Tuesday night.
In Richfield, the one in Richfield.
Right, in Richfield City Hall on the same night as a Richfield City Council meeting. It was very well attended. In addition to their council chambers, they have another room that holds about, probably close to 100 people. It was packed, it was standing room only for most of the evening. Mayor Hovland was able to be there, and also Manager Neil, and also Assistant Planner Chris Acker was present, Councilmember Liz Petchel was present, and Edina resident Paul Raycamp, who does sit on the Metropolitan Airports Commission, representing the City of Marshall, he was present as well. There were about 20 people who spoke during that meeting chiefly about current operations, concerns about aircraft height, frequency, and noise, and roughly a third of them were residents of the City of Edina, roughly a third of them residents of the City of Richfield, and roughly a third of them residents of the City of Minneapolis. There were some, a few comments made about RNAV, and people concerned about not having heard more since last fall, but really the bulk, the 99% of the comments concerned current operations, and how stressful they are proving for people, and how limiting they are proving. I have had a request for regularized information, and I'm wondering if this body would allow us to have an agenda item for this, so people who are following a meeting rather than going to council comments could simply click on that agenda item under reports, at the end of reports, if that's acceptable.
Captain Jennifer, does that make sense for ease of finding information for our residents who want to follow the airport noise issue?
Say, would you say that again?
Yes, so my request is to have aviation update or air noise update added under, at the end of reports and recommendations on the meeting agenda, so that a person who is viewing the meeting online can simply click on that item and be directed.
They could skip our three-hour discussion of some.
Standing item on the agenda.
A standing item, and if there's nothing to report, I'll get word to, to cancel it, but almost every month, there's something to either inform about having happened or inform people will be happening.
Makes sense.
To your agenda, so in the sense that that's, if the council wishes that to happen, there's no, there's no technology, there's no technological reason, we can't do that for you, if that's what you want.
I would support that.
Okay.
That is correct, but it does require the action to be made by a resolution if you're going to add a standing item to your agenda.
So if you'd like, we can prepare that resolution for your next meeting, and then you can just formalize the action.
I would like to request that.
Okay.
Great, thank you. And then the last air, air noise issue is just to remind people that, that there is, their concerns have weight, they are important, and people can go to macnoise.com and make an online complaint, or find the telephone reporting number at macnoise.com, and I'll get it to people in other ways as well, and register their concerns and complaints. And it is important for regulators to know over what area this is being noticed, and that's best done by people noting their concerns as they arise. Then I have a brief update on the Quasqui Centennial Committee, which had a very strong presence in the Fourth of July parade. The House tour is coming up in September. My event, the one I'm responsible for, is Founder's Day, that will be on Thursday, December 12th, and the Edina Corral has agreed to sing, to do a short pre-concert from about 6:30 to 7:00 in council chambers, and then they will sing three historic numbers during the one-hour Quasqui, Quasqui Centennial program, and, and that's the update that I have on that. But the year is proceeding well, and there are a number of families, apparently the Cahill families held their own reunion, and the, there was a Morningside Old Timers reunion, and so the community is getting into the spirit, exactly as was hoped.
Thank you very much. Member Swenson?
We have a resignation from Planning Commission. Is there a time in our agenda you would prefer to discuss that other than now, or would it be okay to discuss it now?
We can. I was going to, I was going to bring it up too, so I think that's fine.
What I was going to propose, because our conversation at the time that we interviewed people is that we only had one candidate that really stood out for the one position we had, and that was Claudia Carr, and we put her on, and she had a lot of history and background. And at that time, we didn't have anyone else that we were, we even discussed really for the job. So I'm going to tell you that I think in our slate of candidates now, we don't really have a standout candidate. So I would either prefer to wait and appoint someone when we redo all the interviews, or interview, I mean, put in notice for just that one opening and interview for that, however the rest of the council would prefer.
Here's another alternative that Member Bennett and I discussed on an interim basis, depending on the timing of Jeff Carpenter's resignation. I talked to Mike Fisher, and he'd be willing to come back if we need him on a short-term basis to fill that gap from now until we do our typical interviewing in January, and our appointments in February, March. So I think under our ordinance, he could come back, not as a full-time member with a full term, because he had to be off a year to be able to do that, that would be the end of December. But if we thought because of the workload that's going on at the Planning Commission, we wanted an experienced hand there, just on the short, for a short period of time, he'd come back and do that. So that's something to think about too. And we could address it tonight.
Carpenter's term is through what?
Well, he, he wants to leave as soon as he gets a replacement.
He was re, he was reappointed a couple of years ago, so I think it's until 2015, his unexpired term.
Yep.
The practice that we adopted a couple of years ago, several years ago, is that if a vacancy arose until about mid-year, we would fill it, and we were even leaving vacancies, even when we had applicants, we were leaving vacancies unfilled once we got beyond the middle of the year because of the calendar regularity with which we've now been making, taking applications and making appointments. I think the community has become accustomed to that, and I think we get the largest number of applicants that way. And so if we weren't going to fill it with a temporary appointment, I would rather ask Mr. Carpenter to stay on until the next round of appointments, or, and I don't think we can really let it go vacant because of the workload.
I would be comfortable having Michael do it.
And then we have three planning commissioners on the Grand View.
The design, the team, the Grand View Community Advisory Team.
I, I'm, myself, if it's between open call to try to fill it, and that, I think I would do open call myself.
I'm just concerned about summer, about doing, I mean, not only is it off.
And you can't, you can't leave it vacant?
You can leave it vacant and go with eight.
That's.
Yeah, you could do that, but what's, what's your concern about having three members of the Planning Commission on the Grand View Community Advisory Team?
We called, we called for two, and we wanted it to be community members with maybe a different perspective, but so now we're bringing on three Planning Commission members, so that changed the expectation.
But it's the same person, his perspective is his perspective, so I guess, I understand, I mean, we were going with, we started with one board or, one commissioner per commission, and Mayor, I think you preferred to have two planning commissioners, but I think given the circumstances, that I would, I would rather not be advertising openings in the, in what's. openings in the, in what still amounts for people to be vacation season. Um, and I, I would either rather leave it open or fill it with, um, someone...
Temporary appointment.
A temporary appoint, a strong temporary appointment.
I, I'd like to have the odd number there. I'd like to have a full slate of people on the Planning Commission. And I, and I'm grateful that Mike Fisher said he would come back and serve on a short-term basis for us. And I think that would be a good way to, to get those...
Member Brindle, how do you feel?
I'm fine with that. I, I think I, I, I agree with what, uh, Member Bennett said, that Mike Fisher's opinion is going to be his opinion, whether he's on or off the Planning Commission, with regard to Grand View. Being sensitive to the fact that we did say, you know, we wanted to have that community piece there, but, um, but I, I actually think that the need of the, of the Planning Commission and the workload of the Planning Commission overrides that. And, and I think he'd, he, I mean, he'd be very valuable there.
There's no learning curve.
No, he'd be very valuable there.
With all the land use activity we have going on, it would be good to have an experienced hand there.
Right.
And then he'd, he'd serve until we had his appoint, his successor appointed, and that person would usually step in, what, February, first quarter of March?
March now. We moved it for a month.
If people were comfortable with that, I'd entertain a motion to that effect.
Some move.
Second.
I've got a motion of second to appoint Michael Fisher on a temporary basis to the Planning Commission for the, uh, period running from the, from the date of, official date of Jeff Carpenter's resignation until Mike's successor would be selected and installed in the spring of 2014. All right, discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose say nay. Carrie, anything else? Member Swenson? All right, thanks for raising that issue. Members Sprague?
Nothing for me, Mayor.
Oh, okay, thanks. Uh, just a couple of quick things. Uh, Member Swenson, uh, definitely covered one of them. Uh, July 20th, did walk with the mayor, Diane Plunkett-Latham came along. We had a s- small group of people, but we did a nice walk around, uh, Roseland Park and, and, um...
Looked at buckthorn?
Yeah, looked at buckthorn and other things that had been planted, actually, in place of the buckthorn that's been removed. She did not wear her dye buckthorn scum tee-shirt.
Oh.
I hope she wore it.
That would have been a photographic opportunity.
Yeah. Uh, and then I sat in on part of the Grand View Community Advisory Team organizational meeting. Bill Newendorf ran that and got him up and going, and Kevin Staunton helped as well as Chair of the Planning Commission. And the co-chairs there are Mike Fisher and Jennifer Janaby. That's good. So they've been meeting and trying to figure out the direction they want to go. Uh, visitation for Ken Roseland was on the 23rd of July, and then the funeral was the next day, or memorial service. And so, another passing of a longtime booster of our community, who, um, was always so prideful in our town and, uh, always so positive about things that should get done. He, uh, there was nothing that he didn't think we could accomplish. That was the way he was in life. So, um, our best to his family. Um, and then, Member Bennett mentioned the Richfield Noise Meeting that same evening. And, um, on the 25th, Manager Neil and I attended, they were hosted here, Southwest LRT Mayors and City Managers Meeting, to talk about some of these issues that don't really get addressed in a technical meeting at Southwest LRT, like the co-location relocation issue, the, uh, operation and maintenance facility issue, you know, who, what town really wants it? You know, and, uh, we never really had that discussion until, uh, the week, until the 25th. So, and we're going to meet again before the Met Council meets, the end of August. Braymar Golf Dome groundbreaking on the 30th. And, uh, also, One Southdale Place was that same morning, and, uh, that was a good groundbreaking as well. Member Sprague and I were both there.
I was there.
And Member Brindle came, yeah, after her, after her morning lessons.
Yes.
And then we opened up the State Legion Baseball Tournament on the 1st. Bob Cote and I sat and watched the Home Run Derby together. And, uh, I don't know how we, Edina did in a State Leg, State Legion Baseball Tournament. Last year, they won.
Eden Prairie won today.
Yeah, so, uh, apparently Eden Prairie won the State Legion Baseball Tournament. And, uh, in the Home Run Derby, the kid from Eden Prairie did not win the Home Run Derby in terms of the number of home runs, but he hit the longest one. He hit one about 390 feet.
Wow.
It was on that field that goes up the hill. He hit it all the way up the hill, and it bounced in the parking lot, went up into the trees.
Jeez. So... Quinns maybe need to recruit him, it could improve their year.
Oh, yeah, I think he was about 6'5", and, uh, he was really something.
Must be the better quality drinking water in Eden Prairie or something.
So...
Probably doesn't come up, didn't come up on your quality of life survey background.
That's it for me. Manager Neil?
Thank you. Uh, given the hour, I'll, I'll try to be brief. Although I did, never mind. Um, we have a, a, for the council's next work session, uh, our topic is Sports Dome. And, uh, so we have been working on a Sports Dome, uh, request, or, excuse me, a Sports Dome feasibility, uh, study for some time now, and it's gone through the various stages that you've asked it to go through, and now it's coming to you. So, uh, next, uh, the Tuesday of August 20th, we have been invited, uh, by the school board to have a joint meeting with them on, uh, Monday, August 19th, immediately prior to their meeting, which I believe is, I think we've tentatively scheduled at 5:30. And I hope that works. I know, Councilmember Brindle, you said that that time is not available for you.
I'm supposed to be looking at my...
August 19th, Monday.
If that, if that doesn't...
What time would that be, like, 5:30?
I think we have, uh, allocated...
Seven o'clock, isn't it?
No, it's like five...
They're meeting at 7:00.
Oh.
Maybe four. Maybe 6:00 o'clock.
I, I think it was more like 5:30 to 6:30, I think is what they're...
Okay.
I had it in my Friday report last week, but I don't have that right here. But I, I think it's 5:30 to 6:30.
I can do that.
Okay.
Is that going to be at the...
At the community center.
It works for me. And at the community center...
Tomorrow night is Night to Unite, and so that we've had a, a good response, again, from the community for the numbers of parties. Um, finally, Karen Curt and I have been involved in, in some diplomatic missions. We've made it a, a goal this year to meet with our colleagues in all of our surrounding cities, just to kind of go through, uh, matters of mutual concern. So we've done that in Richfield, and toured the Richfield City Hall with our colleagues there. And, uh, we just did it, uh, last week with Hopkins, and met at Hopkins City Hall to discuss issues that are common to us. One that they are working on is a pretty significant amendment to their liquor ordinance, actually. They've had a brew pub that's expressed interest in locating in downtown. Um, so they are looking at a rewrite of their liquor ordinance to have no food requirement for brew pubs, but to keep a food requirement for their other liquor license holders. So they're discussing that right now. There, and there is a lot, there is a lot of activity in Hopkins right now, redevelopment activity. It's a busy place. Um, and they are, are really, I think, actively planning for Southwest LRT and, and really anticipating some beginnings. And, uh, that's, that's all I've got for you. Thanks.
Okay, good. Anything else? Otherwise, we'll adjourn and reconvene the HRA. All right. City Council meeting stands adjourned. And, uh, call or order the meeting of the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Uh, roll call, please, Ms. Mangan.
Commissioner Bennett?
Here.
Commissioner Brindle?
Here.
Commissioner Sprague?
Here.
Commissioner Swenson?
Here.
Chair Hovland?
Here. Uh, we've got a form of meeting agenda. Is there a motion to approve the...
Some move.
Second. Got a motion of second on the form of meeting agenda discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carrie, we've got minutes from the meeting of July 17. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve those meeting minutes, July 17, to the HRA. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carrie, uh, and, uh, Mr. Newendorf, three matters of business. First one is public works, building demolition and disposal.
Mr. Hool.
Mr. Hool. Oh, Mr. Newendorf's name is on this.
Yep.
Um, this, this was actually a change order for the, uh, that we ran, we ran into some contaminated soils at the, almost when they were exiting the site on, on the south side of the building.
I mean, it had almost gotten away.
Exactly. So we're, we're, uh, about, it's, we're, we're, um, estimating it's about $29,000 worth of contaminated materials. I'll take, take out of that, and that's, uh, 10% over the, uh, the consti, the, uh, the total construction cost, then is raised up to $127,000. So with that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Okay. Questions? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Some move.
Got a motion and a second to approve the change order.
There are sufficient monies in the TIF district to pay this, and that's where the money would come from.
Okay. Good. All right. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carrie.
Wayne again.
Environmental studies for 3930 West 49 and 1/2 Street.
Yes, sir, this one is similar to, uh, similar concern, different site. This is for the property at 50th and France, formerly home for the Edina Realty office. Um, uh, as we discovered, when we purchased the property, there was also some site contamination there. Um, we're proposing to extend the contract for buyer engineering. Uh, they started doing the due diligence. We'd like them to finish up their work and actually, uh, prepare the response action plan and get this project remediated and put back into service. Um, the funds are estimated to ma, to be a maximum of about $62,000. That would get us from the additional testing, through all the paperwork, uh, getting through the PCA inspections, et cetera. Uh, and those funds would actually be borne by the seller of the property.
Right.
Monies were set aside to pay for these types of expenses, um, so it doesn't come out of our pocket, but it comes out of the sales proceeds. Uh, with that, I'd, I'd be happy to answer any, any other questions.
Questions for Mr. Newendorf?
Uh-uh.
All right, is there a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second on the change order regarding the environmental studies for 3930 West 49 and 1/2 Street. Uh, further discussion? All those in favor of approving the change order say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carrie. And then, uh, last matter, Mr. Newendorf, uh, use of TIF funds down at, uh, LB 71 France Edition.
Yes, this is Resolution 201312. It, it corresponds to the previous approval of the development contract for the buyer, buyer lease redevelopment property. Uh, this is more of a housekeeping item, just to create a linkage between that development contract and the HRA. Uh, the funds that would eventually be u, would be used to pay for the sidewalks and retaining walls and those types of things would be TIF funds from the Southeast Edina redevelopment project area. Um, so this evening, we're not looking for any specific contract amount or any specific or any precise scope of work, but just in general, for the HRA to be on board with the fact that, that those bills will be coming down the road. Uh, winter to spring 2014 is when we expect those to happen. So we'll be back for further discussion, but we are seeking your approval to, uh, to continue, continue moving forward on this.
All right. Is there a motion? Some move. Got a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve Resolution 2013-12 authorizing use of TIF funds in conjunction with the buyer lease development contract work. Uh, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carrie, any other business for the, uh, HRA? HRA stands adjourned.